Start this meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting of the planning board on May eighth to order. Seven P M. Top of the agenda, we have citizen comments. Does anybody, are there any citizens here just looking to make some comments?
I just want to say thank you for your five years serving on the board. You'll be greatly missed. And you added a lot of color and class to the board. And you were a great, a great chairman. So you'll be missed.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate that.
Who didn't bring in the certificate?
Yeah.
Well, this is from the H A.
Oh, a H A.
Don't need a certificate.
I don't need an award. No, it's okay. I make my own awards. That's what I do in my job. Okay, we cannot start our public hearing until seven oh five, but let's see if there's a few things that we could maybe do while we are waiting. I think we could definitely look at our regular meeting minutes and possibly go through those.
Edit to the minutes if you want to get those done.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I'll make them. You want to do those?
Yeah, let's do it.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes for March twenty second, twenty twenty-three and April twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Excellent.
As written.
Do I have a second?
Second thought.
Thank you, Frank.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, we have a couple more minutes yet.
Can you do informal discussion?
Citizens comments?
Well, we had, I was gonna say, we're in citizens comments, period. Is there something?
Now, let's wait for the informal discussion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, um, I really don't want to do anything.
Yeah, she's here.
Oh, but she's here.
Is arriving. Oh, that's okay. We just did the meeting minutes and
Is it after seven?
Open it, yeah.
Sorry.
That is okay. That's okay. And I, and I don't think there's really a whole lot that we can do on this agenda before, uh,
Before seven oh five?
Before seven oh five. I don't think it was
The two forty-nine West Boylston?
Oh, here, how about we do that? Yes, I was gonna say, yes, wait, here we go.
Closing in.
The two forty-nine, but how about we do the, uh, two forty-nine West Boylston Street? The project never started. The property's been sold. We'd like to close this project out and return the balance of funds.
So what, what do we have to do?
I don't know.
Prove it. I've got a letter in there.
Yes, I saw that vote. I'm gonna sign it.
There was already a letter that says we're not gonna
A letter ready for me to sign. Do we need to have a vote to close it?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, well then.
Let me see, what's the letter say?
Mustn't close the site plan review.
For?
Well, we already closed the site plan review.
I'm sorry, this.
Closing out.
Closing the application, I guess.
Close out the account for two forty-nine, two forty-nine West Boylston Street?
Is that the motion?
It's a motion. I'll second.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion passes, and I will go ahead and sign this letter right now. Okay. Set that aside there. Oh, man. I'm gonna wait for a whole forty-five seconds.
So we can, if that's enough time to do West Boylston open space and recreation plan update?
Yeah, it probably is.
I'm just kidding.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, is it?
Yep, well, I think from what I read on, uh, Department of Conservation Services, they said that open space and recreation plan is gonna expire in, they said October of this year. And so we're gonna be working on a new one, and we're looking for assistance and help from the public and from boards to, uh, do an update. I talked with town administrator, and she's talking about having, uh, C M R P C possibly do it, and, uh, I think that's probably a good idea to get it done in a timely manner. I wasn't sure if anyone had thoughts or really wanted to get involved.
Do we want C M R P C to do it?
I don't want to do it, so who else is gonna do it?
Yeah, who do you want, who would you recommend otherwise?
Mark. No, I'm thinking not.
I mean, I think it's
Did they do it last time? Who did it?
They did, yes. Well, they assisted, or no, I guess I'm mixing up the, they assisted when I was in Northborough. I don't remember. I think we did it in-house last time with their assistance to do maps and such, because they've got all the G I S information. So it, we'll definitely need assistance with that aspect.
It may go faster if you have somebody else whose job it is to do it.
To keep it on schedule.
They've done it before, and it's an update, so it shouldn't be too bad, so they won't get too crazy about it.
We do have enough time.
Yeah, well, they said it wasn't due until twenty twenty-five, but I, when I checked D C S, um, it says twenty twenty-three, so I'm not sure. I heard there was an extension of two years, but it's not listed on the D C S site. But either way, we need to get going on it.
That seems acceptable to get C M R P C to do it.
Just to bring everybody up to date. No actions needed.
Excellent. All right, I think we are prepared to open the public hearing for Century Drive's Site Plan Review, Special Permit and Stormwater Management Permit Applications submitted by Birdland Hill L L C for the proposed construction of nine industrial buildings on four lots on Century Drive in West Boylston, Mass. Do we have the
Who's the clerk?
I'm the clerk, but I just need a copy of everything.
That would be, that would be Mark. Here you go.
All right. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven oh five P M. in the West Boylston Town Hall, one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass. One twenty Land Use Meeting Room, first floor, for the site plan review and special permit application as required in zoning bylaws, section three point six and three point two, and the stormwater management permit application as required in section thirty-three of the general bylaws. The application is submitted by Birdland Hill L L C for the proposed construction of nine industrial buildings on four lots on Century Drive, West Boylston, Mass. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting, at which time you'll be given the opportunity to be heard. Copies of the application are available for inspection at the town clerk's office. Uh, open eight to four, Monday through Friday.
Hello. Thank you. Okay, this is open.
Thank you. For the record, John Grenier, J M Grenier Associates. I'm also here with Jim Charney and Gary DeWolfe, who are the owners of Birdland Hill L L C. As you read in the, in the meeting notice, um, what we are proposing to do is to develop what is really the, the lot's last section of, um, Century Drive. Century Drive is a loop road. It gets its access off of, uh, is it East Mountain Street? Or is that West Mountain Street?
Uh, West Mountain Street.
That's actually West Mountain.
Oh, East Mountain.
East Mountain.
East Mountain Street, um, which is in Worcester. Obviously, this portion is in West Boylston. It's abutted to the south by the FedEx facility. So what they are proposing to do is to subdivide this, it's about a twenty-five acre piece, subdivide it into four separate parcels. There would be two smaller parcels, uh, in the, in the middle section, which were two, two and a half acre lots. Each one of those would have one building. And then on the northern portion, um, they're proposing, it'd be a driveway access to come up to the back for three buildings. Um, on the original plan, we had nine buildings. Um, on the southernly half, which, um, I think Gary would, would maintain control of the southern half, we, uh, got rid of one of the buildings and increased the, the square footage of, of the front building, because it was a smaller building located in this area. It was better off just to consolidate it, so you'd have bigger, uh, bigger paved lot area for, uh, vehicle access and get a larger building as opposed to another small building in this area. So we, um, since our submitter, we removed the building. So, um, on the, on this section, we'd have just another three buildings. Again, on the southernly half, we'd have a thirty-foot wide access drive coming up to access these three, uh, commercial buildings. And what they are anticipating is, uh, to have leasable space, multi-tenant. As, I've done a few of these, and as it goes, um, inevitably, you get a tenant who comes in and says, oh, yeah, I want this set, this location, but can we change it? I might need the loading dock, or I don't want a loading dock, or I want more garage doors. So it's, as you get into the process, we anticipate there's gonna be modifications once you start getting tenants involved. I had one tenant on one forty, kind of by U P S in Shrewsbury, and we had it set up for like six buildings, but then Sunbelt came in and they, we got rid of half the buildings because they wanted yard area. So depending on who you get, it, it can, it can vary. But in general, um, I think they want to start off, let me show you the grading, because it is a pretty consistent hill. Everything just kinda shows you what they, what they're dealing with. These lots are the easiest to develop. They're closest to the road. Um, there will be some cut, but those are the easiest ones to start. So they anticipate, they probably start with these buildings up in front, get those out of the way, and then, um, luckily, you have a very good site contractor who's one of the owners, who, uh, he can take care of a lot of the bulk. There're gonna be a lot of cut. What we're proposing is to basically create a big pad here and a big pad here. There will be a little bit of fill. See where this slope is? We're bringing the grade up. There's a little bit of filling in here, but there is some substantial cuts. And what we're doing is creating one pad here for these three buildings, and then this would slope down. It's about a twenty-foot drop to this lower pad down here for these three buildings. All the slopes will be two to one, um, side slopes, and then we break up the, the slopes with, uh, I think it's like eight to ten foot wide flat area, so you don't have a huge slope that just keeps going. All of a sudden, you get, and, and that's what's required for, um, under code, you can't have a big slope. I think you can go back some of, I think it's thirty, uh, thirty to fifty feet, and then you have to plateau it, and then you can go up again. So that helps break up the water from just sheet flowing and rutting and whatnot. So, um, and we've done a number of these as well, and they'll be generating quite a bit of rock, so we can, if they need to, to armor some of that, they'll be generating a lot of rock to armor those and keep everything stable. The vast majority of the runoff from, uh, the development of this is gonna be captured through catch basin, manholes, and, um, it will be, there's gonna basically be a, a swale, a culvert swale, that goes along the shoulder of the road. And Jim has, Jim has this section of road. Um, as you know, the first phase of this was to complete, there's a gap in the, in the construction of the road. He's getting that. How far along would that be happening? We're waiting for the gas company to dispose it tomorrow. Other than that, the soil, the water is in, um, the drainage is in, the electrical is in. So really, if, once the gas goes in, we'll be able to grade it and go and pave it. Okay. So, um, all of the runoff, the vast majority is captured. It goes into this drainage system, which ultimately goes up into the existing detention basin. That captures the water from, um, a good portion of Century Drive. It also captures all the runoff from FedEx. Uh, all of that comes down into this basin. To be conservative, what we did was, we didn't have access to the drainage calculations when this was designed for the whole subdivision. We know that it was supposedly, um, designed to be able to handle runoff from FedEx, from the road, and, um, future development of this. But to be conservative, we said, okay, what is, we had all of, we had Jim Smith topo this, get us all the infrastructure, um, the outlet pipes, the inlet pipes to this. We modeled, okay, what is coming into this basin right now? It can handle what goes into it right now, and it wasn't, we have a design plans for it. It wasn't exactly built per the design plans. So in order to be able to handle the additional runoff from this, um, what we're looking to do is increase the volume of it. Right now, there's an outlet pipe at the bottom of the basin. There's, I think it's, it's gotta be at least a two, I think it's a twenty-four inch, maybe a little bit, you see, the twenty-four, thirty-inch pipe. It's right at the bottom of the basin. So water comes into the basin and it goes right out. According to D E P Stormwater Standards, you're supposed to be able to hold, um, certain volume of water so that it gets treated, infiltrated. I have a feeling a lot, it's gotten silted up, and there's a lot of sediment that's gotten in over the years, which maybe had more volume before, but right now, it, the water comes in and the outlet pipe is right at the bottom. So what we're looking to do is expand it a little bit, um, dig out any of the silt and sediment that's in the bottom of the basin, clean it up. Um, it's choked up. It's kind of overgrown. So we're gonna clean it up, dig it down, um, take all the silt sediment out, and give it more volume, storage volume, and then it'll be in compliance with current D E P standards for, for, for the detention base. So we'll be making an improvement to that, which will put into compliance with D E P Stormwater Management Standards and also provide the additional volume that we'll need to be able to handle.
Oh, and it will be able to. It's not too small?
It's not too small.
Okay.
So, um, and yes, it does need a little bit more, because right now, if we put water into this with the, the pipe that just, it just rips right through. There's no, there's no leeway there for it to hold back water. It just comes in and goes right out. So we're gonna dig out the sediment, dig it down a little bit, give it some storage volume, which will, and then we have to, um, fool around some of the outlet pipes a little bit to balance the numbers, because
Where does that outlet pipe go?
Um, there's a, it goes down into the wetland. There's a long, there's a long run of a culvert pipe that goes down into the wetland that's down here. So we're gonna put an outlet control structure, so then when we ru-run storms through there, it'll fill up, and it can go through an outlet. Then if there's a bigger storm, it can go, and we go through another outlet. So we can control the storm events better. Right now, it's just a culvert pipe that just goes right out. So we're gonna put an outlet control structure there to help kind of control the water and make sure that we're reducing the runoff, um, and make sure it functions properly. One comment from V H B from Wayne was, um, to did a test out here and just confirm what the soils are. Uh, so we'll probably dig through, it, it's, we had a lot of rain, and it was kind of sloppy out there, so we'll let it dry out a little bit. And then we'll dig through. I'm sure it's just choked up with a lot of sediment. There is some standing water in it. But again, I think it's just choked up with just silt and sediment and crap over the years. So we, we need to do that. Um, another thing that we need to provide is a photometric plan. We're gonna need obviously lighting for safety, um, through the driveways. Most of the buildings, they will be lit with, you know, wall packs, typical commercial building. But we will have for the, for the driveways and some of the parking areas, we may have to, um, have some light holes. Jimmy's getting, um, a photometric plan taken care of now, so, um, I'm sure there's not gonna be an issue with overspill of light. You know, it's not gonna be like
At the prison, yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna keep them up at night. So we'll get a photometric plan, also a landscape plan, and we will be landscaping along here for some screening so that you don't just see these buildings dangling up, you know, up on the hill, because that is quite a ways up. So we'll, we'll be providing some evergreens, probably white pines, that type, so we can do some screening, some of the parking areas, especially up the hill, so that you don't just see, uh, you know, make it look a little more natural, especially when you're going around Century Drive. So we will be providing some landscaping plans for that. So th-those are three outstanding items that we owe the board. Anything else, wasn't really, nothing that's gonna change the scope of the project. Before we added those changes and updates, we wanted to get some feedback from the board so that we're not making one change, submitting plans, getting another, some more input, changing plans. So if we can get some input from you folks, we'll make those updates in addition to what we're gonna, um, add that Wayne was looking for from V H B. A-as Jimmy said, they're bringing in, uh, sewer water electric that's being installed in Century Drive now. Um, we're gonna be bringing, we did a loop of water for the water lines to come through. Same thing for the sewer. Jim had gone over that with the, uh, with D P W, or the water, for the water district.
Yep.
Have them take a look, make sure that they were good with, um, how we were looping the water through, where we were gonna do hydrants and whatnot. So we're gonna be bringing in, I think, eight-inch
Eight-inch?
Eight-inch line. Um, buildings will be sprinkled, so there'll be a domestic and a, and a sprinkled line going into each. Um, at the ends of the lines, we're gonna have, we have, um, fire hydrants for fire protection, um, in front of some of the buildings, so, and again, he went through that with the, uh, with the water department, to make sure that they're happy with, with what we're proposing. Another item, we're gonna do a, um, an auto turn for emergency vehicles. We do have, I mean, we don't have any sharp turns going here. It won't be a problem, but just for the record, we will do an auto turn for emergency vehicles to show how they can come and, and, you know, loop through the property, so there's no issue with emergency vehicles going through the property.
Yep, good.
For parking space quantities, what, what are you saying your use is of the buildings? The purpose, you don't even know.
We don't know, but we went with, um, typically on these, you'll have office in the front, and then, um, really just storage area in the back. I wouldn't call it warehousing, because you're not, it's not, you know, it's not FedEx. You're not warehousing coming in. It's more storage area that's accessory to. So we went for all the, whatever the office uses, and then we had some additional overflow. So we have a whole chart of, um, office and storage for each building, um, like for, and which is one space every five hundred square feet. So for each lot, we, uh, made some assumptions on, um, you know, how big the office space, it would pretty traverse along the front of the building, you know, and whether it's one business or five businesses, um, it's based on square, pro-square footage. So, uh, we have a total, we have it broken out by lot. Like Lot one, thirty-nine spaces are, this is Lot one, this back lot. A total of thirty-nine spaces are required. We have sixty-three. Lot two, eight spaces are required, and we're providing fourteen. Lot three, sixteen spaces are required, and we're providing seventeen. And on Lot four, a total of thirty-three spaces are required, and we're providing fifty-four. So, uh, for the most part, we have a good buffer in there. And if something was more of an office use as opposed to, because we have a lot of area for, um, you know,
Truck turnaround.
Truck turnarounds, truck traffic. If it was a use that was more office, obviously, you wouldn't need so much of the truck turnaround. We have plenty of room to add spaces, depending on what the, who the user is. So if it was somebody that was all office space hypothetically, um, we have plenty of room to add parking in areas, because they probably wouldn't need loading, so much loading in the back if it's, if it's more office space. So, um, we have the ability to add more parking, i-if, depending on who, who comes down the road.
I, I, to the general, I'm, I'm just wondering how that compares to the, exists like, um, I think there's Emudge, and then, I mean, the, the other place, I'm just wondering how their parking works out.
I don't know.
Because they, that's the use. I mean, you know, it's gonna be something that's similar to one of those guys, you know?
I, I don't, I don't know. I, I haven't looked at those.
I mean, and there's time to figure it out, right?
Yeah, yeah. In, in my experience, um, having parking just along the, the fronts of the buildings like this is, tends to be plenty.
Enough.
And, you know, if they have some employees that, you know, they're gonna park and kick a truck, they might park in the back somewhere and, and go from there, so. In general, there's plenty of room, but for people who are working in the office, or they have visitors coming in, having a, a row of parking.
And they're not gonna be like a retail place where there's gonna be a lot of
No, 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 and, and it's really, I mean, it's not suited for retail. It might be something wholesale, but you're not gonna have retail people coming in and out of there in general. You're not, I, I don't think they would get that type of, of use. But again, if it was,
You'd get the change.
You have plenty of room. You have so much
But you push the building back or something.
You push the building back, and, uh, again, you might get somebody who says, oh, well, yeah, I want this whole pad. I don't want three buildings. I want one big building and have a big yard area. And we anticipate that it, it happened all the time in a lot of these projects.
I guess, just
Go ahead.
I keep hearing, we got these options, and you're keeping a lot of options open, which is great for you, but when we're doing a review, I can't see us voting on something where it may be a little bit of, uh, a little bit of retail, some warehouse, a little bit of storage, a little bit, we need to get something
Just have to get a store specific.
And for the, and I know what you're saying, and, but for what we anticipate the use to be, and the users who would be coming into this, this commercial park, this is what we typically see, and this is what we're designing for. If there was somebody who came in and wanted to dramatically change something, we'd come back in and say, hey, uh, for Lot four, we, we have a new user in here. It's a total change, and we'd come in for a modification or, or an amendment to the
So you're okay with having it specifying that it's just gonna be
You're gonna set steady use.
Office and, office and storage? Is that what it's gonna be?
Office and, yeah, and garage space in the back.
Well, whatever you use for your celt, for your parking is what you're gonna get.
Correct, correct. So, but I'm just giving you a heads up.
Yeah.
It tends to happen. But that's not to say we want carte blanche, where we're just gonna get this approved, and then, oh, if somebody comes down the road, and we're just gonna, I gotta go ahead and do whatever you want. If it's a change of use, and it's gonna change the parking or change the layout, we would be coming back in.
And I think if it's gonna be a change of use, you'd have to come back in.
Correct.
Because you're gonna be approved for those uses, and that's it.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, the other, now, I, I told you with the grade changes, um, obviously, it's a big hill. We created a pad here and a pad here. It's about a twenty, as I said, a twenty-foot grade change. One comment from V H B was, um, for us to look into connecting, um, so you could access and go through. With the topography and breaking it up into multiple lots, it, it really doesn't make sense, um, for us to try to connect them, because there's a twenty-foot elevation difference from one side to the other, depending on, you know, how the, with how the grades work. And, and what, what the owners are anticipating is that, um, you know, Jim would have control of this, um, and Mr. DeWolfe would have control of this. So two separate lots, two separate owners. It's not like it's
They wanna get between them.
Yeah, they, they wanna have some separation. And to try to, if you're gonna have any truck traffic going up, there's a twenty-foot grade difference. You don't want, if you're gonna have truck traffic going through, you don't want slopes any more than, you know, five, six, maybe seven percent. You'd end up with, you know, of this long ramp that just went from, which doesn't really serve any purpose. So that was brought up as a comment. That's something that we don't, we always don't feel is appropriate for how they're gonna use the site and how it's gonna be broken up in terms of control. So just wanted to throw that out there. So that's kind of the, from, you know, ten thousand feet, the overview of the whole project. This is how we anticipate it, um, being used. These are the types of users, you know, office and garage space in the back. That's typically what we've seen in the past. But if you have any questions, comments, things you'd like us to look at, um, over and above what V H B had pointed out, where we're holding.
Great.
The only question I have, in, in the back, would you have buildings on grade or high, so there's a dock? I, I mean, I'm just wondering, just in general.
We have it right now set up for just garage doors in the back. If someone wanted to have a dock, we could, um, it's not ideal, but you can almost do like an alleyway.
Yeah, I know, they're horrible, because they fill with water, or you have to make sure they don't fill with
Right, and then you're putting, not that we couldn't do it and make accommodations for drainage to put a catch basin in there, but then you'd be piping it around. So again, if someone comes in and they say, we need docks, we can do it. It's a little more work, a little more, because this is all cut, and then we're cutting down another four feet. So we could have it maybe on one side of the building where it slopes down, so you'd have garage doors here, and we're, we could knock that down a little bit and maybe have dock doors at the end.
Interesting question.
Yeah, it's, it's something, again, tenant-based. If someone said, "I need a dock door," or "I need, I need two dock doors because I need one for shipping and I need one for receiving," it varies, depends on, on these. But, we are, we just have it set up right now for garage doors in the back.
Okay. Other questions?
We'll get a lot.
Yep, okay. How about, ready?
I guess to go back to the start, did you turn in the green cards for North East Dewa Butters?
Yes.
Do they include the people in Boylston?
Yes.
Excellent, good.
Yeah, no, we went and, and it's, it just, it's the same.
As long as they didn't forget to do the Boylston one, because we ran the truck in Holden, so didn't wanna repeat that.
It's the same assessor for Boylston and West Boylston, so we went in, he gave us both of them at the same time.
Excellent, that's an easy one. The lots, can you kind of throw in the frontage for the lots? They meet the frontage requirements and you're holding the required frontage all the way back to the front of the building? Does that, you're meeting all the zoning requirements, I assume?
Yes, yes. That's why this, this lot, we, everything has a required frontage area. This one's a little more square. This one is a little wider down here. But, we need frontage and area for everything. It's minimum, is it minimum two acres? Yeah, minimum two acres. And so, this lot is 2.01, this one is two, oh, two and a half, so.
Yeah, I was thinking more the frontage.
The rear ones are obviously much larger, like eight and 11.
But, what's the frontage requirement? And are there any that are close to that?
Um, 150 feet. And this lot has 100 and, like, 150, 157.
And that goes all the way, you'll have 150 feet all the way back to the building?
And then this has 270.
Yeah, that's good.
I think it's 200 and something.
The one on the right is the one that I'm looking at?
Yes, I'm trying to, I'm trying to read my, I think it has a 277 feet. I think that's for the...
Oh, that whole width there is 200?
I think it's 277. I don't know if he would give you the label bit for the total frontage, but we have frontage area for everything.
So, the driveway that goes up on the right side, that's not a separate lot?
This is a separate lot.
So, what's the frontage for that lot? And it is 150 going, because the measurement is specific in the bylaw, so make sure you meet it.
Okay. If we have to tweak something to make sure that we maintain that 150, throw up and make sure.
Yeah, and that's what it is. It has to go all the way back to the face of the building.
Okay.
Perpendicular to it or something like that?
Parallel to the road, but connecting the two sides. So, if you go back a certain distance.
From sideline to sideline has to be 150.
In a straight line. You don't get, like, I was looking at the one on the curve, that could be a question because a lot of times you do the arc length, but in our bylaw, it's the cord.
Straight line. I'll double check and make sure.
Yeah, that's easy, but...
Okay.
Are we gonna get an A and R on this to do the breaking up of the lots?
Yes. Once, typically how I've done it in the past is once we know that, in terms of like the layout, the driveways, everybody's happy, nothing's gonna change where we're shifting buildings or anything, where there might be, you know, yard setback issues. Once we have everything pretty much set in stone, that we're not gonna be changing anything, we'll do the A and R plan and, you know, formally chop it out.
Okay.
We're doing a site plan review for what we, you're asking for, site plan review for four lots?
Correct.
And so, the four lots, are you gonna have, or have you asked for any, what's it called, the industrial? This is the industrial zone. So, it's an industrial park? Have you asked for a site plan review for the industrial park? Because you're required, if you have more than one building on a lot, it's an industrial park. So, you need to have that in your request so that we give you a permit for that as well.
Okay.
So, I think, I don't know if George is...
Now, is that just in, we can talk to, should we talk to the building inspector just to make sure?
Yeah, make sure, because when, I mean, I don't see issuing it. We just need to have it all on paper so that we issue everything you're asking for.
Okay.
Earth removal board, you're planning on going to visit them?
Still pending.
Still pending, yes. Yeah, we have that, so I filed the application for that and they told me that we need to go through this process first before I can go to the earth removal.
Can we do simultaneously?
They could. It's, I just, as long as you know you have to go to them, that's all.
That is an obligation pending.
Yeah, right. And I would probably wait till we get through with some adjustments because maybe I get a question that I'm not sure the answer. The other, so far, I think these answers are okay, so I'm worried. How are you getting your stormwater quality? Because when this was originally approved, it just, this requirements were just for quantity of stormwater. So, you have to provide all the stormwater quality treatment to meet DEP standards on this site?
Correct.
How is that gonna be done? Is that, it's gonna be done on the site, not in the detention basin?
We'll have, if we have, do we have to meet, and I'm asking you this question. Do you want 80% treatment on-site, not, because obviously we get some credit with the detention basin? So, we'll have pre-treatment before it goes into the detention basin through, you know, deep-sump catch basins. It's going through the swale along the shoulder of the road, which we get part of the treatment train. And then finally goes into the detention basin. One other thing, I want to talk about range. One thing that was brought up by Wayne is there is a potential, I don't know if it's documented, a potential vernal pool down, I think it's down here. And he wanted to make sure that, because the vast majority of the water, or at one point, all of the water was coming down, going to the detention basin and not going into the wetland system and down through here. So, he wanted to make sure we weren't gonna dry up that vernal pool. So, he wanted us to treat, so in this section, we're gonna, this is going through, go through catch basins, deep-sump catch basins, and then we do like a storm scepter to get our treatment before it goes off-site. So, we can take some of that water and put it into that wetland dump, which ultimately goes to that vernal pool, so we're not drying it up. So, he wanted to make sure we weren't gonna dry that whole drainage area up and, you know, do damage to that vernal pool. So, to your stormwater treatment for this portion, we would be doing like a storm scepter proprietary to get our 80% TSS before it goes off-site and down into the wetland system. I believe we were taking credit for the detention basin as part of our treatment to get our 80%. Now, if you're saying you want it full 80% before it goes off-site, we can do it. It's just obviously more expensive.
I mean, just reading the DEP requirements, you gotta do the treatment. If there's some way of doing it off-site, you point that out, how it can be done, how it can be permitted. But, to give you a little background, that basin, I think, hit ledge. So, when you scrape out some of that sediment, you're probably gonna hit rock.
You think so?
But, just be ready.
Okay.
Maybe you found rock everywhere else. It would be surprising.
And maybe that's why, it could be that's why it wasn't necessarily built for design because they hit some ledge or whatever.
Right, and there was some question about whether, and I don't remember, I think it was that basin, but there was a 42-inch pipe and someone read the plan wrong and put a 12-inch pipe. So, it's kind of a big oops, but we haven't had any problems. But, when you start looking at your calcs, think that there might be a switch and it might be a reason why.
Okay.
Construction area.
Okay.
That's not, that's not part of your project, so you're gonna have to get in touch with the owners to make sure that they're aware of what you're up to?
Yeah, I, and I'll double check. I'm...
I mean, I'm sure they won't mind.
There's an easement, because this is capturing, this is capturing the runoff from Century Drive as well. So, I'm sure there's rights to, but again, it's, I think that lot is for sale right now.
Yeah, Saint Pia's still on.
Oh, Saint Pia's still on, and that's who they're buying this off.
Oh, right. But, just because you're buying that and still, and working over here, I don't think they'll complain that you're cleaning up their drainage, but I mean, just let them know what you're doing.
And there is an easement, but I think it's to the town. It's been deeded to the town, so you would need to get, I think that's DPW approval because it's a town road, so it would be a DPW approve, approval for the access in there. I don't think he's gonna worry about you doing his work for him.
No, but we'll make sure we're darting around.
Make sure that you do it per what he wants.
Okay.
You have another go-to?
At this time, the, that's detention pond is for the FedEx, right? Only FedEx or it does?
FedEx, FedEx has their water going into that basin, as well as Century Drive goes into the basin. And drainage, because there's, there is, along the shoulder of the road, there is a, there's an existing swale. And there's a culvert pipe that goes under the culvert, under the driveway for FedEx. There's a culvert pipe, so that's capturing a lot of the runoff that's from this site now. It goes down and through that culvert under FedEx's driveway and goes into the basin. So, it's capturing quite a bit of runoff now, but from that, from that already. But, now we're taking, you know, woods and, you know, all the pervious areas, we're creating impervious areas. So, now we have to make sure we're treating it and making sure we have enough volume in there, which is why we're making some modifications. So, it has a little more volume, and then we're putting another control structure in it so that we can control for bigger storms.
Good.
You have anything?
No.
Good for you.
I guess I'll start with the first one. There's a requirement for screening to residential uses in residential districts. I think Boylston is a residential district?
That's residential in the back.
Right.
Yes.
So, I think there's a 30-foot screening requirement?
Okay.
Right where you've got that cut section. Did you save a 30-foot strip across the back?
We have a strip along here, obviously around here, we don't have a strip where we can pull it out a little bit.
Because the idea is a 30-foot screening strip. If you can't make the 30-foot screening strip, we've been amenable in the past to put in plantings and fencing, but something to protect the people on that side and the residences. I mean, you're going way down, so I don't think they're gonna see anything. But, if you put a nice fence up, then it should be all right. And this isn't the area where the water towers, in, the Boylston Water Tower is in West Boylston?
Water Tower's right there.
Okay. Is something about the property line around the water tower that I thought? Oh, okay, so you have, is the town line kind of right at the edge of your drawing? Because the town line, I thought we owned the water tower. Or the town, the, the Boylston Water Tower was in West Boylston.
It's in West Boylston. They came in and...
Okay, so you're not showing a town line on that top area? Okay, so it doesn't really matter, okay.
So, we gave him a break on the water tower.
Excellent.
Yep, but not even a thanks.
I did meet with the West Boylston, I mean, the Boylston Water District, we reviewed that with them, and they didn't have any issues?
Yeah, because it's, it's in West Boylston, the water tower.
Yeah, which is fine. I just wasn't sure.
Boylston Water Tower's in West Boylston.
It was a good spot.
Let's charge him.
We gave them a break.
Yep. What's the other one? So, okay, so you gotta work on or look into the screening. The other thing, you've got that ditch in a terrace, or you have a terrace. Is there a ditch including, included in that?
Where?
In your terrace?
Oh, you're terracing?
So, you're trying, you're trying to get the stormwater out. Let's, is it possible to put a catch basin or a swale in there, go to a low point?
So that...
And then pipe that so you don't have it going down a 50-foot or 70-foot? What is that slope?
It's, you're, yeah, it's like 685 down to 6, so that's 65, call it 70-plus feet.
Yeah. And what's the surface?
From top to bottom.
Right.
But, yeah, but we're breaking it up into, into...
Yeah, so it's like a 30-foot drop.
It's both a 30-foot drop.
Right.
Yeah, we can look...
There's a lot of springs out there, and so I know you're saying you're gonna cut. It's not gonna fall down. It's a, it's a lot of rock. I'm not worried about it collapsing. I'm just thinking you're gonna have water coming down that slope for years, summer, anytime.
At the, at the toe of the slope, we have a swale at the toe of the slope, and we're grabbing that. So, that's not sheet flowing into our parking lot. So, at the, off the pavement at, at the bottom of the hill, where we have a swale, and that's going into a structure, and then that ties into our drainage system. So, we're not, this water isn't coming down into our paved areas and going into our catch basins. We're capturing at the toe of the slope and putting it into some structures at the bottom of the slope.
So, I'm thinking if you have something at the toe of the slope, it might make sense to put something, maybe even in that corner, have it both sides drain to the, which way is north on there? So, yeah, the northeast corner. So, right up there where that line is coming perpendicular.
That, or...
Move away from yourself a little bit. Yeah, there's a diagonal going up to the corner, I think? Is that, I thought that might be a drain line to get, to take the water away from the top and away from the ditch in the middle.
Now, where, oh, where this, we have a swale here, and then there's a, off the pavement at the toe of the slope, we have...
So, that's where your drainage is.
Yeah, we have a drain there, and then that's tying into our, into our parking lot drainage system. So, we're capturing this, a swale here, capturing that, and then there's a swale here, and we're capturing it in this corner. So, none, none of the hill is sheet flowing into the parking. Eventually, if you did that, you'd be getting so much water, then the pavement would start breaking up and you'd be having problems. So, we're trying to keep any of the slopes, any of the runoff from the slopes off the pavement and capturing it, you know, off in the back corners, which these are the, these are the lower sides of the, of the slopes.
Okay, that's good.
Go ahead.
In the industrial zone, there's a requirement for a certain percentage of impervious or, I think it's an impervious calculation?
Lot, lot coverage.
Lot coverage.
And per lot, well, the max is 40%. And then per lot, because we have it broken up from Lot 1, 2, 3, 4, we're at 10%, 9.6%, 11.8% and 12.5%. So, we're...
And the definition of lot coverage doesn't include rock or riprap?
No.
Okay. I don't know what the definition is, but that's something, I would check that. Because it looks like a lot of impervious.
It does. Other questions?
Yeah. I was just looking in the packet, we have responses from Municipal Light and DPW and the police. Have you, have you, are you aware of these?
I haven't seen them.
No, I haven't seen them.
Municipal Light seems to be happy. They just want, they'll be, we'll work closely with the developers for placement of transformers pedestals in metered locations. All electric utility infrastructure must be underground. WB MLP highly recommends utilizing electric heat pump technology for heating and cooling. Light plant will not provide any security lighting, extreme lighting, I guess. All outside security lighting must be electrically fed from the common service point and metered. All outside lighting should be zero cutoff dark sky compliant. DPW had some different, some more comments, the second page recommends full minimum 2% max 6 on all sanitary gravity, sanitary gravity pipe. Outlet control structures detail not shown. Depth of sump recommended, min. 12-inch sump. The standard concrete pavement details, 1-inch top course over 2-inch binder course over 12-inch gravel is not recommended for installation within limits of Century Drive right of way. It's unclear from the provided plans if this is what is being proposed or if this detail is just for the onsite driveway.
That was for onsite driveway.
That's, an onsite driveway you're doing for, for this type of a use on those slopes?
Probably more than that.
What's that?
Probably more than that.
For pavement?
Probably two and a half binder and one and a half.
So, you have a total of four?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, this was one of his comments, you just have to, I mean, do you talk to DPW about other things? I mean, you might just bring it up to them, make sure he's, understand what's going on.
Yeah, I haven't spoke with him. We'll, we'll reach out to him, just to make sure.
It's in the packet there, if you wanna reference the letter, when you, when you talk to him.
Okay.
Concrete sidewalks and ramps and centralized sidewalk to be ADA compliant. Detail ramp, detail two, detail plan 2/2 is not applicable to the proposed roadside sidewalk shown. I don't know.
Okay.
He wants sewer manholes labeled sewer, drain manholes labeled drain.
Makes sense.
Applicant to coordinate with DPW for catch basin. Applicant to coordinate with DPW for catch basin style, great style. And please are happy. I have no issues with this project, respectfully. I just wanted it until the minutes.
Did we get architecturals for the buildings as part of the application package?
No. We can give you a typical, we can get a typical elevation, what the, what the front of them look like and. There's a couple of contractors or, for commercial, like, commercial type building we can, there's plenty of other ones around that we can use for examples of what they'd be looking to build. And Garrett, you've talked to a couple of.
Yeah, he built right on Hartwell Street. We spoke with him, similar type building that's right on Hartwell Street.
You just built one kind of tucked in behind?
Right, right.
The old senior, yeah. What about signage, speaking of the Hartwell Street project?
You probably need a lot.
Do you need any signage up there? I mean, not that anyone's gonna be able to see it.
At the industrial park, at the base of the industrial parks, I imagine.
There's a sign there now.
But I'm just thinking.
Right, right at the base of the road where you come in off of Mountain Street.
Yeah.
There's a big multi sign there now.
Oh, I'm just thinking that you want people to be able to find these things, you know?
Right, so if you have multiple buildings at, at the driveway, you may want.
Well, there's a sign by law and it is pretty, you should be able to.
Should we handle that now or should, is that run through the building department and when the time comes we?
Done both. You can go for it now and if you want something that doesn't comply with the zoning, we could review it and approve it.
Got it.
Or you get zoning minimums or zoning limitations if you do it after you get the site plan review. And if you wanted to change it then, you have to go to the ZVA to get a change.
We should take a look at this, at the, what the max requant requirements are. And if it doesn't seem like it's gonna fit, because if they have multiple tenants and you're, you can only have whatever, you know, twenty square feet and it's not gonna work, we'll, we should look at that now. Otherwise, it's just gonna be wrong.
Each of the Century Drive buildings, they do have their sign.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, you wanna know where you're going when you're up there. So that may, I'm expecting signs.
We're gonna have, we should look at that to make sure that what the, what the requirements are will work and if they don't, then we can propose something. So we'll look at that now.
And I think the fire department's gonna need like a number, you know, once you have sort of how you want it arranged and numbers are established, they're gonna need some identification so they know where they're going.
Who assigns addresses? Is it the?
Building Department? Building Inspector. Building Inspector.
Okay. Cause we'll probably look at getting, whether it's gonna be, you know, A, B, C for buildings or how, you know. Sometimes it gets a little tricky.
Well, you've got the full nine one one and so I think they each need some kind of a clear address. So they go to the right place when the call comes in.
Right. Okay.
But I think the fire department does that right. Is it the fire department that assigns numbers?
No, we do.
You guys?
We do.
Good.
Alright, we'll hash through that.
We work with the fire department and make sure that they know what we can.
Excellent. And the only other thing which I went out of order, but you talked about water, the water line. This is kind of, I don't know if it's a, it was a dead end, but is there a way to loop the water up through your whole site? I know you can't put a driveway through it. Just running a loop from where you showed that ramp between, for the driveway.
Part that is going.
We weren't, we weren't going, looping it. I don't like ask.
Yeah, we talked about that, about, because a portion of, we're obviously coming up the driveways because we're gonna, and we're gonna have hydrants, you know, where it makes sense, where it opens up. And then we were running it down and tying in and I forget we were.
Mike was, Mike wanted to have a loop phone from the.
Yeah, that makes sense for water design. Safety, you're gonna get better flow for a fire, all that. Actually, you got a water, you got a better water expert here. That's right.
I think we were looping, I, I think we were looping it through, but I gotta double check.
Okay.
But we did, you did meet with them.
John, are you tapping off the fire line for the domestic? No, right? You're tapping off the eight inch?
Two, two separate lines.
Two separate lines going into each.
So we're gonna be running a line down through the parking lot.
Correct.
And then, which is gonna be your main eight inch.
Yes.
And then we'll be tapping off that with a one inch and most likely a two inch or, or maybe depending on.
Six inch for fire, for fire hydrant.
Yeah, no, I'm talking to go for sprinkle, to sprinkle into, for the sprinkler line.
Yes.
You have to see what the flows are, but they'll be talking to the, the building department when they get the sprinkler size, whether it's a two inch or a four inch. Depends on the fire flows.
And there's enough flow and pressure out there? I have no idea.
We did a flow test on it and.
We did? Good.
We did what happens in a water tower.
Right, you have a water tower.
Don't tell them. That was all mine.
Excellent. Got it, Mark.
The height of the buildings, are they gonna be like a two-story office available or, or just a low building?
No, I would, it'd probably be like a twenty-foot eve, but not two-story.
Right, so the office is gonna be on the floor level, not upstairs?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, unless somebody comes in and they, and they want two story, but then, you know, your building doesn't need and it's, you know. But we'd anticipate, I would say at a minimum, the eve would be about twenty feet, a twenty-foot eve. And then usually the pitches are, you know, maybe not even one on twelve or a half on twelve, they're minimum pitches. But you wanna have, the biggest mistake you can make out of the gate is having not keeping your eaves too low. Because then people wanna, you know.
Rack.
For rack systems or they wanna bring things in there. The biggest mistake you make is, is trying to save a buck and having your eve too low. You're better off going a little higher for the value of the building and flexibility.
Great. And is there, I know it's in the business district, but I'm not sure if it's business and industrial to have no parking in the front yard. So no parking in the front of the building. So that's what.
That's why we first, we need to talk about screening to make sure that, so it does have a thing for parking in the front, but kind of doesn't really make sense.
What about the FedEx? They can't, they are parking front of the building.
Ooh, he has parking in front. And so does an.
Image. I think we waived an image.
It's possible. I, I mean, and I don't, the idea was we did, we wanted to put it in place so we didn't have a, when you drive down the roads in town, you see all this parking right there. I don't really see a lot of people driving down Century Drive unless they're going to a specific location.
Right, yeah, this is kind of a different animal. I agree.
So just check, check the zoning and ask for whether it's a waiver from us or whether you need to get a variance from the. Where it might be, but it's a, it's a zoning.
We'll make sure, whether it's a waiver or variance, we'll make sure we do something so at least landscaping in the front, you're not looking at grills of cars. We've got some nice landscaping along the frontage so that, yeah, it looks nicer.
I mean, on this one, it seems like the most important is the top of that slope in the back where there's, no, actually way back. That's where there are people living. I mean, everyone driving in, it's an industrial park. I don't, I'm not expecting pretty, but it would be nice to have it broken up and that would be good.
Okay. And we did reach out to, it, it just so happens that, that you're reviewing or reviewing engineer. No, I'm talking about Graves Engineering, Jeff Walsh, his brother, that, his brother working there. So he had asked me, actually when we submitted for the improvements to Century Drive, he reached out to me and says, hey, what are you, are you doing? He goes, what are you doing? I said, no, that's just for the road for now. I said, when we get the plans in for the development of the site, I'll send you over the plans so that you can look at it, because his brother lives next door. So I sent it off to, I sent it on my Jeff so he could take a look at it, cause his brother lives in the back, so. We're trying to make sure we want.
We've got a third review engineer, that's gonna be good.
And not to mention, we don't like people coming up with eggs and ditch boards.
Or else when you think you're almost done, they come up with a.
Yeah, at the last minute. So I sent it out immediately. I said, here, go take a look at it. If you have any questions, you wanna go through anything, let me know, we'll go through it. So he was appreciative.
And then you're, you said your driveway width thirty feet?
Thirty feet.
That's pretty wide. Why are we going that wide?
The, if it's, you get tractor trailers, you get commercial vehicles going in there, we try to keep it a little bit wider. Especially where there are some, you know, some side slopes off of it, we're trying to give them a wide berth, as opposed to a twenty-four foot. So, and that's for, well, that's for all of the driveways.
Well, that's what, typically we'll, we try to keep it less than that for water quality sake. If you're gonna have to treat everything onsite, you're gonna, you may be able to save a little there.
We can look at cutting it, cutting it back. I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd.
Battery.
I wouldn't go to twenty-two feet, but maybe we can go twenty-six, twenty-six or, we'll take a look at that.
And if you have to widen on a corner, that's okay too.
Right, right.
It's not a town road.
We're anticipating tractor trailers, I try to keep it a little bit wider just because you get two trucks, one coming down.
It's all yours, it's just how much you're gonna have to treat.
Yeah, I think Jimmy just, he was thinking of paving it down signs, we said, we'll squeeze it out. Pavement's expensive.
Yes.
It is.
And more expensive every day.
Yeah, so we'll take a look at that. We didn't really talk about that.
No.
And so who's the butter on the north side? Is that the jail?
Jail.
You're not complaining?
Yeah, the jail. Yeah. That would have been a lot of butter over here.
Yeah, that one, I'm not so sure. We need to worry about a screening thing at the top?
What's that?
If you're gonna try to struggle with screening, I don't know that we need to worry about that.
Okay.
I mean, really, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Other questions from the board?
I don't know.
Anybody here in the public have questions? George, you got any questions?
No, just, remember, you waited your hotel for industrials in July. Haven't seen it yet. They haven't given us a copy of their training line, but that's something you're gonna have to look into for industrial buildings.
George, is that gonna be for how you're heating them?
Heating them, what, EVs, stations. Not so much on this, but on residential, for instance, you have to wire the whole house for electric heat, even though you're not gonna have it in there. I don't know exactly what is going to be in the industrial, in industrial, I D C, but.
I'll take a look at that, cause I know we recently just did permitting for a bank. And for that, we needed, they said, we just got the permits and they said, you might wanna add an EV.
Yeah, it's coming.
Unless you're pulling the permit now, you're gonna need it.
And I think even also gonna be doing solar too. Just give you some good news.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't know what the requirements are for EV, for, if it's more of a industrial.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not sure exactly what it is yet, cause I haven't seen the.
Right. I know for retail, you need to provide one, which, so we have a retrofit. And with the EV, you have to do an EV, but it also has to have be handicap accessible too. So we have jockey things around, put extra handicap spaces in front of where the EV station is, so it's, there's a few little idiosyncrasies with that. So I'll, I'll take a look at that. Cause I know we had a look at it when we did another project. I'll see if it's applicable for this, cause it, it may tweak, you know, how we ship parking spaces and some handicap spots and whatnot, so.
I think you might want to include the EV options.
Yeah.
And then if you want to go back later on.
At least we can stub for it, so.
Yeah, we just, you know, even market us an EV things.
Yeah.
Then you can go back and do it.
Both be required, put the wiring in for the EV and plug it off. So within sixteen, wherever EV charge is going to be. But again, that's for the residential. I haven't seen the ones on, on the commercial yet.
Okay. We'll take, we'll take a look at it, cause it's coming. And we'll see if we need to do something, we'll do it.
Did you say that you have to have handicapped EV spaces now?
If you're gonna have, well, you're right with the handicap spots, but now if you're providing an EV station, that has to be handicap accessible too.
But who can park there? Is it gonna just be rarely used if there's no handicap people with EVs?
I was thinking same thing, Mark.
It's like just never, it's gonna be sitting there forever.
Yeah, but it's.
Now, you gotta get a combination of factors there to make that work out.
I mean, it's like you have two limits and it's just never gonna fill.
I know that you have to provide, like say for a sand spot, you have to have an eight foot wide touch spot. You have to provide that there as well. Not that it's necessarily.
Designated for.
It's not designated.
Designated, but at least, you know, if they're next in line, they can, they can do it. I don't, it's a good question, sorry, I'm suddenly.
I mean, you can have any spots that nobody parks at, cause they can't, if they don't have an electric car, they can't park there, if they're on a.
It's not dedicated, but it has to be handy, it has to be handicap accessible.
Right.
But not dedicated to handicap.
That makes sense.
Whether the current law actually applies, that we need to have a handicap accessible charging station or parking spot for an EV vehicle. We should absolutely be looking forward, cause I can tell you there's laws coming about in New York, there's laws coming about in DC, where there are other things happening where it needs to cater to a certain handicap accessible community. So we should absolutely plan for that going forward, as opposed to just saying, oh, well, maybe we don't need to think about it now and then down the line.
Yeah.
Oh, we have to think about it. So.
Can you say your name for the, the record?
Oh, Ashley. Ashley Quest.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess just put in the handicap size spaces, but maybe not the handicap sign yet or something like that.
Well.
So you could.
Right, yeah, we'll make accommodations for it.
Okay.
That's at least a problem.
Right, it's just surprising, huh?
Any other questions, comments at this time?
I think you didn't get any comments back from the fire, fire chief.
I think that's right. We don't have fire chief anymore.
Put into fire and conservation.
Yeah, do you need to go to CONCOM?
No, we did go, obviously we went to CONCOM for the construction of this, the section of Century Drive, but the weapon's on the other side of the road.
So you don't have to.
So, when are you gonna get your stuff to VHB?
Well, now that we, now that we have input from you, we're gonna package everything together to get it out to, to address your comments in VHB.
Okay.
We'll probably have it out the door in a, a week.
Okay.
I checked with VHB and they're four to five weeks out.
Yeah.
Oh, they are.
Are you busy?
Yeah, I just completed a few things, so I have a, I can, and we already made some of the changes. We just wanted to get some input from you before. We didn't wanna say, okay, here's all your changes, then you ask for something that we're, you know.
Yep, it's more the time, the lead time, as far as when we're gonna continue this public hearing too.
We're not gonna make it for the June meeting, so it has to be July.
So you wanna close this and then?
We're not gonna close it, we're gonna continue it.
No, continue the meeting.
Oh, continue, okay.
Yep.
I was gonna say, you got it.
Oh, close this version of this episode.
July twelfth.
July twelfth?
July twelfth, yeah, at seven o'clock. Do we need that seven oh five thing, you know?
Okay, good.
It can be seven.
Seven o'clock. Oh, make it seven fifteen because we're gonna have an election next in, oh, no, that's in June.
That's June.
That's in June, okay. Nope. I was gonna say, cause our chair is not gonna be with us at that meeting.
Oh, shoot. So then we're gonna have only four votes on this in the future.
I think a person can, I think you're allowed to miss one.
Do we have the Mullins rule in place?
Yeah, they can, they have to, they watch the video of the meeting.
Okay.
Will we pass the Mullins rule?
I don't think it's a local exception statute.
Okay, as long as you say it's good, I'm good, but I thought you had to pass it to a meeting.
Cause we've recovered before.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, so I don't think that will be. So I'll, I'll take a motion to.
Motion to continue.
Public hearing for Century Drive.
Public hearing for the Century Drive to July twelfth, seven oh five.
And the idea is, um, because VHB has taken like four to five weeks for turnaround time, 'cause they're very busy. I emailed him today, and that's what he, I asked him if he could do it in three weeks, 'cause I figured it would take a week to get the turnaround, and then have him turn it around to us, but then it's, I'm gonna be a day out of the meeting and it doesn't do us any good. We meet it, and you get to meet with us, but then, right, don't we have a realistic thing?
Okay, just, just a recap. We're gonna verify that, make sure we're meeting zoning for the lot widths.
Yep.
Um, we are going to make sure that we're meeting our store mile standards.
Yes.
Um, we're gonna look at the widths of the driveways, which I know Jim probably wanna squeeze that. Um, the screen, or the screening on the back.
Signage.
Signage, yeah, good.
Is that it?
And the other, the remaining items that you have in.
And the remaining i- items for, you know, doing auto turn and getting the photometric plan and.
And architectural drawings.
Yeah.
It's part of our package requirement. Looping the water lines, you're gonna let us know if you are, um, be clear what uses you're gonna have.
Mm-hmm.
No residential, no.
Yeah, and we'll try to, maybe we should besides, I know we, we calculated parking for office, but if, like, say if you're gonna have your business there, which is more contractor's business, so we should just make sure. Yeah, it wouldn't be any more intensive, if you had a, a contracting business, there wouldn't be any more intensive on parking, but we just wanna make sure.
Is that a line?
You're moving, moving your business there, where, you know, they're.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, plumbing contractors, subcontractor, have their offices there. We'll just throw it all out there, so that, you know, we're on the same page.
And, and so we have the, you know, so it makes sense what we're approving, you know, I mean, if we're gonna change what you're doing.
Right, right.
George, are, what, what is?
Are contractor yards allowed in the industrial district?
I have to check that. I don't know what else to talk my head about.
I thought you've seen that a bunch of times.
I think I've seen it around, but I don't remember for sure.
Okay, that's something to check in our use table. I'm not sure they're allowed in industrial.
Okay.
But I'm not sure where they would be. I think industrial makes the most sense, but.
Sure.
I know it was a very limited.
Limited.
Amount of location.
Okay.
Okay. I, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
One more thing. This meeting is recorded, so if you want to watch the meeting, or if you have some doubt, you can always go back to the town website.
Okay.
You can watch the video and this. And also for the VHB, take your time, do it, and then send it to the VHB.
Right, so that we can.
Get less fee for you, otherwise, you know, more fee. Talk to VHB, Wayne, you know.
I'll reach out to Wayne and just make sure that.
Everything is, you know.
We're on, there's no questions, or we're doing something, and he's saying, no, 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 that's.
Otherwise, you know, the fee will be.
Another round. Wayne off would have a meeting, meeting with him, yeah, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, got a motion on the floor to continue this public hearing, do I have a second?
We have a motion and a second.
You motioned and I seconded?
There was a motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Could you second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. We'll see you back here. You won't see me, but, uh, these folks will, these lovely folks will see you back here in July.
Right.
Ribbity.
She'll be in that, she'll be sitting out there every time, I'm sure.
This is, this is prime Wednesday night television watching.
Oh, man.
All right. Uh, yeah, that's, do we, okay, let me just get myself back together here, though, so we, we can save this one, number two on new business till later, um, are we having? Right, wait, number three we already did. Are we, are we doing the nineteen West Boyle Street informal discussion? Is that happening?
The same right here.
Yes. Okay, um, let's go ahead and talk about that.
All right.
Should we have?
All I need to just increase the basically from eight cars. I asked for thirty, but they made it so difficult, so I'm trying to add to up to fourteen. That's what George suggested anyway.
Okay.
And he asked me to, if lot, the both lots are combined, and he asked me to get ANR. But the both lines are speaking with, you know.
This lot and this lot.
Okay.
Speaking with the lawyer, he said the two lots are combined.
They already are.
They are combined.
Right, they, 'cause they're two non-compliant lots, side by side, owned by the same owner, so they automatically under the zoning.
Oh, it's automatic, okay.
Well, it gets combined. Sometimes we've had situations where people do things on those lots.
Like that one, yeah, okay.
So we don't like that, but having it combined is good. Uh, someone was prepared.
Yeah, nice job.
Yeah, here.
Yeah, I don't have it either.
Oh, this was the, just off of the software.
Okay. Uh, so an ANR is not necessary to do this?
So I don't think it's necessary, but, um, they, they get automatically joined, but they should not get.
Not get enjoined later?
Should not get, yeah, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um.
Light away in the middle.
Last also is, uh, not under the wire, just destruction basically, so it should be.
You mean the water line, or?
Okay. So I think what we have is, um, you need to meet all the zoning requirements, but because you're not going, well, you're saying you want fourteen spaces. Is that fourteen new spaces, or is that fourteen total spaces on your property, both properties?
All I need to use, I need to use a lot if I'm visiting, uh, you know, the station, I just want to open down there.
How many spaces, though?
How many, sorry, so the.
How many spaces total on the, the two lots?
It goes there?
No, how many are you, how many are you asking for?
Well, okay, I have a car dealer license.
Yeah.
Unused basically, for, uh, so I have up to eight cars, so I want to extend it to fourteen.
So you need six.
Right.
Need six. So you're adding six. How many do you have on your property for the, uh, repair?
Registered or unregistered?
For the repair area.
For the repair, they are registered. They come in registered.
Yes.
But for the license.
How many parking spaces? I don't care how many vehicles. I'm looking at how many parking spaces. 'Cause if you exceed fifteen parking spaces on your lot, you need to do a site.
On the two lots or one lot?
On the two lots. On the two, that's one lot, yeah.
It will exceed, definitely it will exceed.
If it exceeds fifteen, then it needs a site plan review, 'cause you don't have a site plan review yet. You've never done a site plan review for these.
But I, yeah, but the dealer license is for eight.
Yes.
If I had six, there would be unregistered vehicles for fourteen. But, but for the customer's car, they come and go on daily basis. They're not gonna be there all the time.
Do you have, how many parking spaces do you have for the?
I have over, over thirty, forty cars that would fit them between the two lots.
All I want, all I wanna know is how many parking spaces are on the property that has the service station?
How many lots?
How many parking spaces on that lot where the gas station is?
They would fit, on my station, at least it would fit eight to ten cars.
So we have eight to ten.
On my, on the gas station alone.
So then you wanna put in eight more, or do you wanna put in fourteen more?
Unregistered vehicle.
I'm not, I don't care whether it's registered or unregistered. That has nothing to do with the site plan review.
I cannot tell you.
Or just because of his license, okay.
No, but site plan review.
Can I, can I just feel something?
Excuse me, no.
Wait, wait, wait.
Site plan review says fifteen parking spaces. Whether they're registered vehicles or unregistered vehicles, it has no difference. You still have a parking space for a vehicle to park. So it doesn't matter whether it's registered or unregistered. So that's what I'm trying to get to, is, I mean, it's pretty easy. If you wanna, if you have eight or ten on the existing site, you're allowed to put in seven or, right. There you go, the math was too much for me.
That's all good, thirteen.
So five, yeah. So you get five to seven of the unregistered vehicles on either lot. If you wanna do more than that, then you need to come in with a site plan review, which would be allowed, but you would have to go through the site plan review process.
Like these folks were just doing.
Yeah, just drawing of the thing, showing where all the spots, how they fit and that kind of stuff.
Not as extensive, 'cause that's a big development. This is a smaller thing, but you would still need to go through the process to get the permit, to have more than fifteen parking spaces on the lot. Does that make sense? I mean.
One second, you know. Because I'm talking one thing, you're talking different thing. Okay, cars come in for repair, and then how, that's different. What I need, I need just to increase my used car license from eight to fourteen, okay?
Yeah.
But as far as parking, I have so many spaces to park, so many spaces to have. The lot, the lot alone, the lower lot alone, it will carry, maybe it will hold over maybe thirty to forty cars, if you're talking that sense.
What do we have?
But also those cars, what we call the storage cars, they're not gonna be moving all the time.
Right.
Okay, so customers' cars that will come in and go on the same day or the second day.
Right, but if they're parking there for fifteen minutes to pull into the Cumberland Farms, they need a parking space, right? You need a parking space at the Cumberland Farms, and they're only in and out in fifteen minutes, right? So if you have.
Cumberland is, has, uh, convenience store. I don't have a convenience store.
You have, you have a business, so it needs parking spaces.
And I do have spaces, but as I said, they come in, in and out. On one side, I can park six cars, on the other side, I can park ten cars. In the lower lot, I can park thirty cars. So I have spaces for over fifty cars. I put them all together.
He's packing cars in.
Yes.
We need to know, but legally, we need to know how many spots you have for your business to run. What you do with it after that, I guess.
If, if you're not illegal, how many spaces I have.
Correct.
Over fifty, legally, we're talking.
I don't, you don't have, you don't have, you actually don't have.
Painted spots, like lines, right?
Painted spots, right, we're talking about spaces and lines.
Paved parking spots is all we.
Paved parking spots.
We deal with paved parking spots. We don't worry about the use, whether you're going in for a coffee, or going in to get your oil changed, or going to get cigarettes. If there's a parking space on the property, which is required for operations, then that gets counted. If you're proposing new ones, if you're exceeding fifteen parking spaces, you need to come in for a site plan review.
Definitely, definitely I will exceed over fifteen, because me and my employees, they have four cars.
Right. So that, I think that's right. So I think what you need to do is, um, do, go through the site plan review process.
But now you're talking different story, or different from what I have. All I need to do, increase my lot, my, uh, used car license to fourteen.
That's in a different place. You have to go to upstairs. Increasing the number of car license. To eight to fourteen. You have to go to the select board. So now you are asking here in this board, you came into the select board, I know that. You're asking for fourteen. So, but, that time, you know, you need to park, you need to get the site plan first, in this board first. You need to get the site plan, you need to know how many cars you are going to park in that site. For that, you do need, if there is, if you are planning to park more than fifteen, you need to come in for a site plan review. The site plan review will, I would suggest to you to go through the site plan review for the longer, long run. So all you have to do is, you know, talk to George, and then you can hire some of the, uh.
One of the engineers.
One engineer.
Surveyors. Surveyors will be cheap for you. You don't have to go to an engineer. Surveyors, the surveyors knows. They are familiar with this select, the planning board. They knows very well. So all they do is, you know, they draw a simple map. And then they draw a simple map, and then they draw the lines, how many maximum, how big the each parking space is. And they will make, calculate the number of parkings, and then they will give it to us. So with that, couple of meetings, we should be able to do the site plan review.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a simple site plan review, but it's the idea that it's a, we work on by parking spaces, and it doesn't matter what use, so.
Correct.
I don't know if that makes sense to you, as I.
So now, now I can see you in the lower lot, at least ten cars, right?
Now?
Yeah.
No, not ten cars.
Eight, ten cars, eight, ten cars.
No, right now, six or seven or eight maximum. I move most of them. They come and go, as I said, they're, they're not staying there for long.
So on the long run for you, you need to go through the site plan review, so that you can park more cars there.
Right.
And then, when you want to increase your license from eight to eighty, eight to fourteen, or any number of cars, that's different. You have to go to upstairs, select.
I went to the select one the first time.
I know, I understand that.
You, you told me move to, you know.
No, 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 I understand.
Now we have to go.
Without that, no, no, that's, that's not going to be a lengthy process, you know? If you can go through this process, this, and then, you know, you can go to the select board one day, you'll be fine.
So now what should I do?
You should talk to, uh, talk to your surveyor, talk to our building inspector. He will give you all the, all the information. Talk to the surveyor, and he will ma, ma, make a small drawing, and then he will calculate how big your lot is, how many cars legally you can park. Each car parking, you know, different size. You know, you can park on, the parking space is this much size.
Are, are you gonna pave?
That's another question.
It's already, uh, it's already regrinded, the whole.
Oh, regrind?
Yeah, already grinded.
How that works?
There's no need, I need to know. I don't wanna pay thousands of dollars upfront, and then you, you tell me I need, you need more stuff to do. I am not a pink company. I am a small man. I have a small budget. I go by it. If there is a lot of stuff to do, tell me from now, because I'm not gonna pay it.
Can you strike?
I'm just telling you, tell me exactly what you need. The same as what you did with this junk come in here. Okay, I am small, I'm not a big company. I'm not gonna spend ten thousand dollars to collect a few hundred bucks. Definitely, I'm not gonna do that. So tell me exactly what you need, and I'll go from there. Now the surveyors, okay, I'll get it, but I don't want them, you tell me, okay, do this and do that. Pavement, I'm not gonna do definitely, because that's gonna cost me fortune. Ten to fifteen thousand dollars. For what? To park some cars if I need to park there? It doesn't make sense. Maybe to you it makes sense, but to me it does not make sense. I'm not gonna spend a lot of money. I'm telling you just upfront.
Well, that's okay.
Be honest with you.
Yeah, no, that, and that's good, that's.
Yeah.
The, all the things that need to get done are listed in the zoning bylaws that are on the town's website. There's a zoning bylaw, site plan review, and it says all these things that need to be, uh, put together for a site.
Right, I am in front of you all. So tell me exactly what you need.
Well, that's what, it's a whole list of things.
Now he's telling me, get the surveyor, and you'll be done.
You've hired a surveyor or engineer, and then.
I have a surveyor engineer, he will get it done, but then what's after that?
But you first, I would read through the regulations and see what's involved. If it's more than what you intend to spend, don't waste the money and hire a surveyor.
Correct.
You need to maybe talk to a surveyor, talk to someone. Don't have them do the work yet, show them this plan.
Well, George.
I, I've gone through the whole process, right, so.
And have, I mean, and then have them go through it and say to, add more, more than fourteen spaces on the two lots, you, you're gonna need a site plan review. What do they anticipate the costs and the issues might be? And they will go through the whole thing with you. What we do is we review those when they get submitted, and make sure they meet those standards that are listed in the zoning bylaws, and that, um, and that process can run five to ten thousand dollars. So if you don't even wanna spend that much money off the top, don't start the process.
Let me ask you this now. I have license for eight cars, right? Unused, uh, uh, used car license for eight cars.
Yeah.
So now if I bring eight cars to my lot, used vehicles to sell, right? Plus my car and the employee's car, that's over ten, twelve cars. So am I default, or am I okay? That's the question.
You are.
Plus also, plus also the customers for repair. No, I'm just telling you.
Well, well, but I, I, that's the thing, is you're, with your eight, and then four is twelve, you don't need a site plan review, 'cause you didn't come to fifteen. Once you get to fifteen, then you need to come to us for site plan review. If it's less than fifteen, you just need to go and work with the building inspector, and make sure you meet all the zoning requirements of setbacks, screening, parking lot, or parking lots, parking space sizes, so that you're in compliance, so you don't need to come before us. That's a smaller type of a development or job that we don't need to get involved in, and you don't have to pay for the review and the application and all that other stuff. Does that make sense? So as long as you keep under fifteen, under fifteen, you don't have to come to us. Fifteen or over, you, you have to.
So, and what you're saying, fourteen cars between unregistered and registered, right?
To have, I, our, right, our mentality is, if you have a car parked on this.
If you told me that then from the beginning, I would have done it a long time ago.
But if you have a car parked.
Yeah.
That's a parking space.
I understand, I understand your point, but if I knew that from the beginning, it would have been a different bargain.
I'm sorry, okay.
So basically, over a month and a half. I'm gonna run myself.
Okay. Do, do you feel like you have enough information to move forward at this point? Do you feel like you have enough information to move forward at this point?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not wasting your time, but, uh, I'm trying to understand this.
Yeah.
And that, if that came to, from the beginning, if I understood that from the beginning, I would have, you know, treated it differently.
Yep, that's okay.
That's all.
If, if by any time, if the cars parked there, more than fifteen, the building inspector can, can take action, he can find-
I am not trying to basically go above the law, or break the law, no. But I just found out now from the gentleman here, what he's saying, okay? I was under the impression that if I have eight used car licenses, I can park them regardless how many cars registered I have. Because as I, if you, let's say he walked in one day and I have sixteen cars, okay, in the morning, and then they, they went down to twelve in the afternoon. I'm not breaking the law, people are coming in and out, I cannot stop them, okay? If I have eight cars to sell, and those cars are not selling, then I am default, because I'm getting some other cars and, okay, and that's happening the same day. That's what it is.
And it, and actually, the, it's a little tricky, because when you say they're in in the morning and out in the afternoon, it's really the space that that car would take up. It's not the actual vehicle, you could have, and like, if you think of Cumberland Farms, there's fifty cars that come in there every day.
In the morning.
Yeah, every, every hour, and, but they only have twelve or, well, they have twenty-four parking spaces, and they came before us with site plan review, because they had that many spaces. And so the, coming in and out is not the issue, it's, if you have a, a need for, like you said, eight parking spaces, and if you're gonna sell eight par- parked cars there, you need sixteen spaces.
Right.
And so, that's where, kind of, that's the basis of ours.
I need more requirements to get more than fifteen cars, basically.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
But, but a space is a paved space, like, can, can you stripe, if, if he has regrind, can he call that a space out back there?
I don't remember.
I don't know, I don't know how to go-
If he's parking vehicles, it's taking up a space, and if it's, if it doesn't have like a narrow area of, like, access, and it's big enough, it should be okay.
Yeah, okay, so you can count, you can arrange it, and just say you have, whatever, you have a site plan review for, however many spaces are, could be there, even if you don't see painted lines, I mean, you don't, uh-
He's allowed to park cars on his property wherever he wants to.
Yeah.
Well, wherever he wants to, inside the zoning, the setbacks and all that stuff. We're, we're not gonna worry about that, the building inspector is usually pretty good about, just keep it off the neighbor's property, don't let it drain wherever it might be.
Isn't it dirty from the back?
There's a lot of spaces between me and my neighbors anyway, I'm not, you know-
Right, and that's, but that's what I mean, is, but you have to stay on your property, even if there's fifty feet to your neighbor's house, you can't use their property.
Yeah, no, no, I do my property.
And, but that's the idea, is that you can put those vehicles out there.
So I can park anywhere within, within my space.
Well, there's, there's buffers, what's the back buffer? Is it fifteen feet, from the back line, from the-
Front yard is ten foot, and side and rear are ten foot.
Oh, so you have to be ten feet away.
I got, I got over fifty feet between me and my neighbors, on the back side and on my side.
There's a line, a number on the line here. Or you're gonna-
Twenty-eight, right?
Yeah, but then you have to come, you, you can't park right up to the edge.
He's got eighty-seven.
And usually, like, like, um, the liquor store over here, we ask you to put some, uh, fence, so that when the cars are there, like, if, if they were in a parking lot, the lights wouldn't shine into their yard, so you put a fence or so, trees or something.
Yeah, but it's got eighty-seven.
But it's probably already trees.
You can fit in parking this way and that way with a twenty-four Ferrari.
Correct.
But-
Okay.
But if he goes over fifteen doing it.
George, did you wanna add anything in here?
No, I just, I, I went over this information, when I told him about the fourteen places that if he stayed with fourteen, you know, I can take care of that.
Yep.
But even when he was talking about a lot more cars, and I said for that to happen, tell him about the fifteen trigger point, that's gonna mean that you have to go to site plan review.
Yep.
And when the money was mentioned, and it's gonna cost the city of five to ten thousand dollars, then he said, well, he doesn't, he, he's not gonna make that much money.
Doing it.
Exactly.
Sure.
So he doesn't wanna spend that kinda money. I said, well, that's up to you, you make that decision.
That's right, that's totally right. Okay, so, I mean, so it seems like, are you comfortable now, you have the information you need to-
I'm most comfortable.
Make, make a decision, uh, uh, move, move, moving forward?
I'd help him right along.
Good, no, that's good.
With the information, absolutely, yes.
Okay, good, no, that's great.
I'd help him right along, trying to understand this whole process.
Sure.
So I'm willing to help him some more, if he, if he wants to go along, but he's gotta come and see me and give me some, something to work with.
Yeah.
Rather than, you know, a, a drawing in the back of a napkin.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
This is a real thing. So if you have any more questions, you know, talk to the building inspector.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on in our agenda here, um, why don't we, why don't we head up, can we do, since George is here, what, do we wanna do cadoodles quick? Yeah.
He's here for zoning too, I think.
Oh, he is, he's here for zoning, that, that could take longer, let's just leave that for last.
Well, is she here for-
Yeah. Okay, so, why don't, can we, can we just knock cadoodles out then?
Are you with cadoodles?
No, she's with the zoning.
So that's, can we just knock cadoodles out?
Zoning, zoning bylaws.
Can we just knock cadoodles out real quick though, 'cause I don't know what else, what, um, oh, that he's here for it, George can just give us the update, and we can maybe move on from there?
Yes, that's what we wanna do, because I think we have to get VHB to go out there and do a pre-construction, even though it's halfway constructed and-
Okay, so what is the status on cadoodles though, George, is it, is it a-
As I mentioned in the note that I sent you, it started off being a single residence.
Right.
And I think they found out that they needed more students in there, uh, in the daycare for, for it to pan through, so they decided to go back to their original.
And they're going back to it.
We went back to it. So the, the house had gone through quite a bit of, uh, uh-
It looks like a house, it's got two garage spots in the front of it, like it looks like a house.
It's, it's now stopped, and, and they have to give them the word that there'll be no inspections on that house.
Okay.
Until after they have satisfied where they should be at this point with your-
With the site per, okay, great, so we just need to get VHB to go out there then and-
Yeah, have they done any site work? I mean, I, we got that email.
They moved the material around, and they started to do something with the retention basin down below, so there is stuff with VHB to look at, if they, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, well, I remember seeing an email from a neighbor from Holden.
Well, what happened, I think there was, those were just some, a, a point that they were referencing in their triangulation.
Oh, okay, all right.
I think that's what it was.
Okay.
I went out there and looked at it, I didn't see anything disturbing, other than fact that, like I said, it's for triangulation, I think, wouldn't make.
All right, so I should just send an email to Wayne and say, please go check this out? At, at some point or-
Before I go any further with him, I'm just, I wanna make sure that they're at a point where you want them to be, but the whole project has changed, and they changed back, so.
Okay.
Right, so we need to review the approval. I'm pretty sure there's a construction inspection fee that needs to be paid, if we don't have enough in the account to cover some of it, because we're gonna need to get an authorization to VHB, because they usually say, when we say, okay, can you go out and inspect this, they say, are you authorizing this and you reply?
I must have done that, or somebody must have done that when they first came.
I don't, they haven't said that they were starting construction, so I don't know that we ever got that. So I think that's what the process is.
The only thing I got was, was a single residence house, regular, house that they built by right on, that's all I got.
When we, I thought we, you know-
Is there another house on that property, isn't there an existing house?
No, just the school on the backside.
Well, I think that used to be the house.
That's in Holden, that's on the, that's not even in-
That's not, okay, so there's not, there's not two habitable dwellings on that lot?
In, in, right, in West Boston, no.
Okay. So-
So we need to contact Wayne, I, that's just the front end work, and then contact Wayne and say-
Yeah.
They're starting work or have started work, can you go out and see if everything is in accordance with the plans?
Try to figure out what happened though, 'cause I mean, like, it was, this is sort of a screwed up project, 'cause they built a whole house.
Is it, I thought they just started.
It's like a whole house, there's a house there with, with, with a two-car garage in front of it, I just drove by there yesterday.
Like, with windows and-
Yeah, it looks like a house, it looks like a house, it's the white, you, you know, farm Chelsea style.
It's all stripped outside, there's nothing, there's no, there's no-
Oh, well, the outside looks done.
Outside, usually that's what they do first, anyway, so.
Okay.
It is, it is quite a bit finished on the outside, but there's still-
No, but that's, that's just a lot of work before they did any, I mean, they poured a foundation, they-
But, yeah, but they, that was because they decided to do a single residence.
What do you mean by that, what do you mean they decided to do a single residence?
The way, the way to stay, uh, well, on, on childcare, in your own house, you can take up to ten, ten students.
But they were already established for that.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, look, they have stopped work, I feel like, uh, the recommendation here is that they should come back and explain what's happening at the next meeting, if they would like to move forward. You have stopped their, their progress, they can't do anything at this point, I think that they should come back to the board and explain what is happening.
But I have pulled-
Before we even send Wayne out there, right, I think that, that seems sensible, so, um, I'm just gonna not take any action items here beyond saying-
Just ask them to come, make an appointment?
Do you wanna contact them, or do you wanna ask George to?
Uh, well, George, why not, 'cause I'm not gonna be a, a solid point of contact at this, I'm not gonna be a continuous point of contact here, so if you would tell them that the planning board, it needs to, they need to come here and explain what's happening.
I have explained it to them, I will tell them again.
Can you s- have them send an email to the co- to the, uh, planning board email address online, and just ask for, to be on the meeting?
To be on the agenda.
Because it's, it's a thing to request to be on the agenda, so all we have to do is enter the information there and-
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George, that's appreciated, all right, we can move on from cadoodles, I, I figured that was a little bit much of a thing, whereas this is gonna be a little bit more of a thing. Okay.
Gentlemen.
Let's talk about zoning. And, well, really, we're doing the semi-annual town meeting article review, is where we're at, um, our recommendations, the explanations, et cetera, so. Uh, I think-
Did you see the explanations in that document?
Sure, so, um, there, there were some explanations that were provided.
Shorties. Yeah.
Um, I think that they're, they're thin.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, I, I am planning to put explanations online as soon as, you know, hopefully tomorrow, so that folks can kind of review the warrant articles and show up to town meeting with a little less questions, or a little more pointed questions. Um, so I wanna be able to provide the public with, uh, as much information as possible, so I'm looking for more like a paragraph, as opposed to, I mean, the, the one to two on that first article, that, that's a little more straightforward, but on some of the other ones, more of, a, a few sentences or a paragraph. I know, uh, Madam Chair, you had talked about, um, if there was a schematic that could be, show this is the current condition now, and this is what it would be, um, like, you know, maybe if there's, but I don't know how much, we don't have a planner, and so it really would default to one of you to do, um.
I, I was suggesting photographs of good examples versus bad examples, but maybe that's not, that's not the best idea.
We cannot put-
But if you had the, like, um, the one where you have the, um, two lots, or one lot in two districts, if you had, you know, a, a schematic of a generic square box showing, here's the cut, here's the lot division, um, and, and this is how it would apply as a current bylaw, here's how it would apply if the, if the revision was approved, I just think that would be helpful to folks, that they could visually see something.
Yep, I'm, I'm gonna state here now, for the rest of the board, that I am not available to do any of this work at this time, this is not a week that I can do extra work for any of this stuff.
And it really needs, needs to be like tomorrow, so it's not just this week, it's-
Yep, yep, and, and I, and, and really, and it's really been the last two weeks, 'cause that's, I've been working since last Monday, so, um, but I'm looking forward to stopping working for at least one day, uh, this Saturday around four P M. So, um-
Two.
For you, for you. So, some, some diplomas need to be distributed, um, but hopefully you'll be coming to see us more.
So, I'm looking through all the articles, and we don't have to, as a planning board, we don't have to recommend or act on any of them except, or until you get up to the zoning bylaws.
Sure.
Is that correct? Because they're-
Yeah.
Yeah.
The others are money articles that we don't recommend.
Agreed.
So, let's look at Article twenty-one. Authorization, it's spelled wrong, but that's all right.
Oh, no, is that an old version?
Article twenty-one, it's with a red line.
Oh, wait, am I looking at, I'm, I was looking at this one.
Where, where?
The title.
Oh, yeah, authorization.
That's probably gonna warrant like that, and neither I or council or-
Spell check, doesn't get it?
Spell check didn't find it, but I'll just look it up.
All right, so that one-
But that's the title, so technically that's not-
It doesn't matter, right, that's right. So what we're looking at is, this is the, section one point four, A, the continuing of a non-conforming law, you guys have that?
Yes, I, I mean, we got this right here, I'm-
I don't know, um, we're changing from two, one year to two years, um, and it's basically because state law requires that it be two years at a minimum, so-
Right, oh, thank you, sir.
Do we wanna just state that, or do we need more explanation than that?
Basically, town council, they, they just wanted us, they just wanted us to meet what the state requirements, and the state requirements for more, two or, two years or more, so that, so, because of the problem that we had with the, uh-
Right.
With the reservoir motel.
Okay. So that's the explanation we get for that, we don't need any fancy pictures, I don't think.
No, we don't need it.
No, I think, I think that's the one that, that that one sentence of, it's-
We're just trying to get to state law.
And just so you know, the bylaw committee voted to recommend this.
All right.
Uh, the next one, um.
The two point four.
I mean, I had initially said, you know, to clarify what, what is allowed in this, in the-
Can't see the change.
Uh, it's the not extended to the more restricted portion, the split lots.
The thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
We got rid of the thirty feet.
Oh, so this, but this isn't red line, this is just-
Which one are you looking for?
This is our change.
Right, there we go.
The change word.
Oh, the new thing you're looking at is sort of the cheat sheets for the meeting.
Oh, this is a, this is the meeting stuff, that's not-
Yeah, that's a meeting.
So what do we need to?
Look at this one that's in, you got this in your packet here.
Well, sure.
But the question, so, so the most, the article, the warrant articles were written without red lines, they were written as the new replacement language.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, the-
No, that's not the one.
That is not going, that is an internal document, that is not going to town meeting.
No, that's not the one, but, yeah.
Well, but I'm looking at this one, Article twenty-one has red line in it?
No, 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 no.
I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know worried about that document, so.
I'm just, hold on, hold on. But this one has red line, and the next article doesn't.
I don't know where you got that document.
This is the one goes to the town meeting. That's the town meeting one.
So I see, so, so, I, so I think we were expecting-
I probably do.
That what would go before a town meeting would show what it was we were changing, so people could see specifically.
Yeah, why, doesn't, we've always done strikeouts, so you can see what's going on.
So, if, if I'm gonna be perfectly candid with this board, the way these articles came in is not how I would anticipate. I got one email with everything all bunched together, it was, so I used my best judgment of how to send this to town council. So that's what I did, to make it clean, that's why there is suggested to be a handout, um, at town meeting, show a separate handout, um, to show the revisions, correct? And the reason why I think that this is the preferred method, is because then the motion can be very simple. The motion can say, I move to approve Article fifteen as written in the warrant. Alternatively, if you have strikeouts, now your motion is, I move to amend zoning bylaw article, whatever, by striking in line three the words da, 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 and replacing them with the following. So the, the motion becomes cumbersome, which is why replacing the paragraph in its entirety is an easier motion.
So I guess I would suggest then, uh, why would we not, as part of the presentation, put up the strike-throughs, so people can see what it is that is happening?
And that's what I've handed out.
Okay.
Or I email to the board, looking for your feedback on the red line. Or I email to the board, looking for your feedback on the red lines. That's gonna be a handout at town meeting, just like the coal is a handout, just like fund balances are a handout. So that would be a handout at town meeting.
Okay.
Um and then whatever is on, whatever the planning board would like displayed on the screen at town meeting. Whether it's the red lines, whether it's a schematic, whether it's the explanation, you need to let me know what you want. Or else I'm just gonna insert my own judgment. And that would likely just say Article whatever, uh section whatever of the of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, so. Uh would we wanna just add things to the handout? I mean, certainly we could sketch up some.
Handout has stuff, so I don't know, we need to do that. It's, well, we need to be prepared.
Can I ask a question regarding this?
Um, yes, go ahead.
So currently, what that bylaw says is that there is such lot shall extend not more than thirty feet. Into the more restricted portion. And it's getting changed to shall not extend into the more restricted portion. What exactly does that mean?
Okay, well, so that's something that we would talk about at town meeting. This isn't the public hearing for these. We had the public hearing for this in April.
Okay.
Where we could have gotten some some discussion about what that part is. What we're talking about right now is what we're gonna present, because it's our job to present it at town meeting. Uh but you are welcome to ask that question.
Would it, I mean, it's.
That's the question we have to answer.
It should, it should be a town meeting, but the easy answer is, is it currently says you're allowed to go thirty feet into the less restrictive area? And now we're saying we're proposing to have it not allow you to go thirty feet in. You can't go thirty feet in with your use.
So which, what what zonings are more restrictive and what are less restrictive?
If so, if a lot has.
Single residence.
Single residence is more restrictive on what you can have on it than a multifamily or a business.
Oh.
I don't know the answer to that.
It's, commercial is more restrictive than.
General residence?
George, I was gonna say, George, we have the expert right back there.
Commercial is uh less restrictive. You can put all kinds of things on that lot, build all kinds of things, have whatever you want on it. But in a single residence, you have a single residence home.
Right.
What about commercial versus general residence?
Pardon?
What about commercial versus general?
Depends on the the schedule of uses that are in the zoning bylaw. So wh- whatever's in that, in the zoning bylaw or the schedule of uses, that is what can go in that particular lot.
Generally.
I'm specifically thinking about a lot that was combined of a general residence to. Commercial.
Right, so general residence allows residential only, no commercial use, so that is the more restrictive. So if someone were, if they were half and half, general residence, commercial. They could put a commercial building thirty feet into that general residence as it is now.
Okay.
In the proposed, they can only put that commercial building in the commercial area.
Right, so it's basically just saying where your line is, is where your line is. That's it. You get, you get what you get inside.
Understood, but I wasn't sure where the ups and downs were as far as what prevails over what.
Yep.
And general residence allows multifamily, whereas single family doesn't. So if you were trying to put a multifamily in a single residence, you wouldn't get thirty feet pushed in. You would have to stay in that.
Yep.
Absolutely.
The zoning applies to this this district that's there, is what we're looking for.
Yep. Okay, so I mean, certainly, I don't know.
We can put together a script.
Maybe, you know, you can put as uh as diagram. You know, which is.
And we, can we do, yeah, that makes sense. Can we do a diagram?
Diagram, one is good di- one is.
Current and then proposed.
Yeah.
You could just have have a have a boundary line and then.
Have it building.
Square, put a square, it's gonna be dark on the screen, right, we go up and just with this, without this.
Yeah.
That's all you have to do, is do.
I mean, I think to get the point across to people that you should be able to give an actual use case. So for instance, here is a commercial property that is combined with a residential property. Here is where the commercial property can extend to, that they can build on, that they can do things with versus. So if there are any use cases in town, that might actually be a way to act, like physically show it.
Right, and I think that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna try, we're gonna show it, but there's, I mean, it could be business and industrial. It could be commercial and residential, single residence, could be commercial and general.
Showing it in like a tiered priority of what zoning takes precedence. Like which one, what, like what is more restrictive to less restrictive? And then as an example.
And what would evade?
What would prevail on, say, something happening? Like a business trying to expand and going on to like a residential that they own.
Right, or, right.
Yeah.
Or vice versa.
I think there's a lot of combinations and we'll have to be somewhat simp- simple.
Give the general idea.
Give a, we can't be generalists.
Why not?
We cannot, because these are zoning bylaws. This dictates what people can do with their property.
Right.
We cannot be generalists. We need to be specific.
Well, the the zoning is specific. It's the example that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Right.
As far as example is concerned, we need to be able to show, hey, here's the priority.
And this is.
Say if you have a lot that is this and this, this is the higher priority, this is the lower priority, and this is what it would do.
I mean, the the the, the example.
Give an example, no, well, I would just, I just said that I, we, I could take some photographs, but we are not taking photographs.
You'd get something that looked like this.
No, let's.
No, we're just gonna get, we need to get some general examples and.
I mean, I just think if you have.
Can you use a specific property?
No, that's what we're saying. No, we cannot do that. We have to give an example, otherwise it would be a little easier.
You can give a diagram that says, hey, this property is commercial, this property is general residential, and here is the priority level of.
This is no good.
What.
This is good.
This is allowed current.
This is no good. That's what we don't want.
You know, what prevails.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking, if we did that and you put a residence, and then you show like somebody can be thirty feet into your, closer to your house than nine. You know, with whatever their project is, I think that would be that.
But I'm saying, like, if you have at least that priority level of the zoning.
Yeah.
I think it, but the problem.
Takes precedent, one is more restrictive.
I guess.
That's not really outlined clearly very well.
It ju- it, but the other problem there is it depends what project they're doing.
Right, I was gonna say, I think it depends on where you're.
Cause when if you're in a single residence and you wanna build single residence in your next two uh general residence or commercial, you wanna push into there. You wanna have your single residence go into that property, because that's less restrictive.
And you could, that's the thing, and you could, because it's not less. Is more restrictive.
More restrictive.
Well.
I'm talking about a commercial property.
Yeah, right.
Going more into a single.
Well, that's always the problem situation.
That's almost always the issue and that's why, which I.
Situation, if it went the other way, they wouldn't dare.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if we can show that there's a priority.
You'd like a hierarchy, hierarchy of what. I don't.
Prevailing restriction.
I understand, I I understand what, I understand what you're looking for. I don't know in practice if it works that way.
We could make a long list. I guess what does it gain you for, to give the long list? If you know, well, but if you know that one is more restrictive than the other, that more restrictive can't get closer.
She's saying she doesn't know which one is more restrictive than another.
Less restrictive.
So like, if you were to, if you were to rank them, you know, we have so many, we have so many types of zones, right? How, or districts, right? So if, you know, just number order them, I think, is what she's asking for.
Essentially, basically, if you look at your plotline and you see that there is a commercial building next to.
This, this is a one, one means most restrictive. This is a five, this is the least. Uh I've got a two and a four. But I I I understand what you're saying.
Single residence?
Yeah.
General residence? Business? Industrial?
Industrial.
Limited industrial, commercial.
Well, on our, on our map that we can print, there's single, general, business, industrial, commercial, limited industrial, conservation.
And conservation, so.
Did I miss anything?
That's, and basically you just wanna see a ranked order, so if you don't understand what what we're saying, what.
Like, hey, I know that there's this property.
What is restricted?
What is restricted, what is it restricted?
Sure.
Buying, if they happen to buy the property next door, like, do I have to be worried about, you know, them expanding?
You can't put this into that.
Correct.
You can't put this into that.
That's where it gets tricky. I mean, we, and we just worked out the, the single residence district. You can put a single residence in the business or in the industrial district, it's allowed. So, but if you wanna put a single residence, if you wanna put an industrial in a single residence, you can't. So a single residence.
Into a general residence.
No. General residence is residence, so that's why it's gonna be a single residence, general residence, business, which is commercial, industrial. Limited industrial. And I'm not sure what conservation does, but that's all town owned jail.
That's sort of, we'll, we'll keep that separate, but what's the difference between, is industrial?
Then that, that would be, that would be helpful.
Is industrial more or less than light?
Limited industrial. Limited industrial was the area up off of beyond one ninety, and that was for more high-end industrial. So limited industrial is more restrictive than industrial.
Than industrial, okay, so flip flop those on the list there, Frank?
No.
Oh, you got it already.
Industrial, limited industrial, commercial.
And like I said, I have to look up conservation, I don't know what's allowed.
I just think that it would, from what you just said, limited.
Well, limited industrial.
Goes above industrial underneath business.
More restrictive, yes.
In that, in that ordering that we go on there.
If you have commercial and limited industrial as separate zones?
I'm sorry?
Do you have commercial and limited industrial?
I'm working on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't have to figure it all out, but I think we can, that that makes total sense. I hear what you're saying. You're you're looking at, you don't know which one is more or less restrictive. So it's not helpful without that, the example's not gonna be that helpful if you don't understand that.
I mean, are there specific examples for as to how these articles came? Cause that might be a a way to actually.
Sounds like we, sounds like we cannot do that, so.
There are.
You can't bring up the problem we're solving.
There are, there are absolutely examples, but we.
Right, absolutely, that's what.
Present them at the meeting as part.
Be able to present them at the meeting, but is there any way to find that information out?
Uh Madam Chair, I would suggest if something is part of a public court order. That is a public record that is available online.
Public record is public record.
And like, like uh Mr. Freedom had asked me for a document.
Right.
And I literally just downloaded it off the court's website, and that was a decision on a case. So if there's something that's in a case decision, like the, where it was the, I'm just gonna keep using the easy example, it's a little.
Yeah.
Gets that flip, less contentious, which is the one year to two year.
Yep.
The courts, the court informed the town of that, right?
Right.
Court order, a court decision by a judge, it's a court decision by a judge, which is public document downloadable from the internet. You can cite that, you can quote a judge.
So it's the, it's the privacy, and also we don't want to.
I think we don't necessarily poke poke people, right?
So you could just do a search, what she's saying, you could do a search.
This is something that is now affecting the whole town. So if there's a decision that's been made, we should be able to see what happened.
Can't we reference the.
She just said, go to the.
Review, the website is masscourts dot O R G. Um the court case, the courts would typically be the land court.
Right.
Or the superior court, you can select. Um and then the defendant or the plaintiff type in West Boylston. And you can, and usually it's gonna say zoning, but sometimes it's, sometimes it's written zoning board of appeal, sometimes it's written Z B A. You can pull up every case, and once you pull up the case, all the filings on the case are there, including towards the bottom, a decision.
Yep.
So this is a meeting to try and figure out how to make it better for our town residents to understand what exactly is on the town warrant. If they have to go through all of those steps and instead it is not linked in a document. We are not making the information actually accessible to our town residents.
And so then what we have to do is we have to go back to the fact that we're an elected board. And there's gotta be a little trust that we're trying to do the things in the best interest of the town. And if there's not that, then you have to do your own legwork. I mean, even if we say something specifically.
That is causing this to come to a town warrant, to a, to a town meeting, to an article that we're all supposed to be voting on. There should be a link somewhere, so somebody can actually, like whether they click on the link and do anything with it, that's up to them. But it should be there, because you all know where it came from, you all know where it stemmed from. If you are not putting that in there, it is not a clear communication.
I I I understand that, I mean, I think uh something to keep in mind is that while certain cases. May prompt a review of a, of a bylaw. It doesn't mean that that is the cause, or even is the reas- is the result of what we actually put forward and change, right? It it's, it's about, sometimes that's a trigger, but that's not necessarily the thing that is making this this rule get changed. It is just a prompt to say, hey, we should review some of these things, cause we actually don't, you know, we, I, I've been on the board for five years. Does the, I, we've actually talked about reviewing various laws at various times. And we're just trying to actually make some of them come to fruition um over, over an amount of time, so I think it's important.
If if there's something that you have to back it up.
So hold on, uh we have a town administrator. What is the, why we cannot put it in?
Um.
I will put you in the spotlight.
Thanks. Um, just the concern of future litigation. And some of the cases, although some of the cases are um.
If you're telling me it's public record, how is there a potential for future?
If you please let me finish, through the chair. Um, some of the cases, appeal periods are still running.
Sure.
I mean, we could also make the, an example that illustrates whatever this situation is, just not very specifically. You know, like there's a house and there's a bu- business and this is the straight line, but maybe it's not as straightforward in the case.
But it wasn't, I mean, it's just, it wasn't Jane Smith at one.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, I think.
But you illustrate the situation.
It's a, a person, you know, you also have to consider like what it, what it would be like to, for, you know.
A person.
For a person who's sitting, for Jay Smith sitting in the audience there, for for us to come up here and say, we're changing this law. Because Jay Smith did this crappy thing to her property, and uh we would like to make it so nobody else can do it, right? I mean.
It is the truth.
Yeah, but you don't have to say it.
But I mean, but eh, but I mean.
Darn neighbors.
If there's, eh, I, I, I don't, I don't, I personally don't feel comfortable doing that, so.
And I don't think it helps, I don't think it helps the zoning get through.
And we can, you can choose not to have me be the spokesperson, but I personally would not do that, because I don't feel comfort, I I wouldn't do it. To any of my students at, in my job as a registrar, right? We make rules and policies and have input at that all the time.
I could suggest to you.
But I'm not gonna call out a student's name.
I mean, the litigation is still ongoing, why are we trying to change a bylaw?
Oh, just for future projects.
What I said is, the appeal process, if the appeal process is still open, why are we still trying to?
It doesn't even matter for those cases, it's, it's for future.
It's so it doesn't happen again, like I said, just, just because it, the situations that arrive are not necessarily the cause of the change of the bylaw. They highlight where potentially we might do some revision to make things better or clearer for the people who work with the bylaws. To work with them, and so that is our job as members of the planning board, and that's what we're here to do, to present it for the, before the town. And the town does not have to choose to vote it in, right? We, I mean, they they can say no and go with what is currently there. And then that will just continue, right? And that's, that's also fine, that's due process, yes.
One other thing is, sometimes they're just to sort of streamline a little bit of work, like this two years or one year to two year thing. Is, all it does is prevent the people from having to go to the Z B A to get the two years.
Correct.
And come back to us and say, I got it, you know?
There's some of these other, other articles that are a little bit less straightforward.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, that that's that thirty feet in one, I mean, that's horrible.
So let's, can we, I, cause I I wanna, I wanna concentrate our time here, um and.
I'll pull together uh a little display, you know. Who do I send that to, Jen, or?
Yes, thank you.
Cap. Um.
By law, maybe.
Twenty-three.
I don't, I think, that's excellent. Uh we, before we move on. Uh we should vote to recommend these at town meeting, yes?
I I I would make a motion to recommend all of them at town meeting. I mean, we did all the work, I'm not gonna.
I know, so can we do it all at once? Can we do it all at once? Okay.
Can we go over all of them and then vote?
Do it all at once, great, yes, let's do that. Um.
And then we're talking about the presentation, or?
We'll get, we'll get there. Let's, let's, let's get to the recommending, then we can talk about it. So, alright, so twenty-three is the change in the scale. Um and the, uh asking for a digital copy and eight hard copies instead of twelve hard copies. And this, I think, uh you know, my explanation was simply that we're updating to be more modern. Because we actually want electronic copies and we don't need as many paper, and um that. And, um, that this is the most common waiver that we grant. Is the scale in our, yes.
The most common waiver requested and granted during state plan review.
Do we recommend these?
Good, okay. Um, I don't think, I don't know that we need more explanation than that on this one. I think this one's simple.
On our handout, are we gonna have the explanations, is that what we're trying to do?
The handout's gonna have this, so that people can see what we're actually changing and the, and the explanation. And then the motion, we'll just read simply so we can.
Right, but why wouldn't we have the handout having the explanation as well as the, um.
So Madam Chair, through you, there's, there's multiple documents. So there, uh, what town meeting voters get at town meeting is a version of the warrant that has the warrant article as printed and then underneath each warrant article item is what is on what, what Benny had before in the red explanation.
Okay.
So it's not a pure version of the warrant as it's posted with, it has that insert of the, of the explanation there. Those explanations also refer to, on the, on the bylaws ones, it says something along the lines of, please refer to the yellow handout for a red line, which is really just a black one, but a red line version of the warrant, which is the draft that I share with you, so there's, so the, the, that's gonna be a separate sheet if people wanna view that, but then altogether, articles one through twenty-nine will be the warrant article followed by the explanation, warrant article followed by the explanation on one sheet.
Okay.
Red line on a separate sheet. So as opposed to putting on the red line document, that's an, that's a further, that's a further explanation of an explanation. So rather than put an explanation again there, cause it's already living on the warrant.
Okay. I'm, I'm certain that when we see it.
The explanation is on the warrant?
The, the version of the warrant.
I'm certain that when we see it, it will all make sense.
It's, it's the way that the town meeting has happened, the town meeting handout has happened in this town previously.
Okay.
Is that you have a warrant, but it's not the warrant that's posted, the warrant that's posted doesn't have explanations on it.
Got, got.
Right? So people at town meetings in the past have had, have received a document that has each warrant article and then the explanation on it.
When they arrive.
When they arrive. That document has traditionally referred to additional handouts. The COLA, the cost of living increase, typically on a pink sheet.
Right.
For more information, please see the pink COLA handout.
Gotcha, yep.
The fund balance handout, please see the fund balance handout for all of the bylaw changes, not only personnel, but also, I mean, not only planning, but also the personnel bylaw changes. Um, it says, please see the yellow handout for red line.
Okay, that sounds fine. Alright, uh, Article twenty-four, this is about the
Stormwater.
Um, this was to bring us up to date.
Yeah, the state law changed in two thousand and six, I think, and we're updating.
Gonna be really up to the times now.
Right, and then the NOAA stuff is from nineteen sixty, or the other referenced item was from nineteen sixty, the NOAA stuff is up to the current.
Yep.
A year ago.
Okay.
So we're going with the most current science and information.
That sounds good, Dave.
So we're gonna. We're gonna need to, does the, uh, does the article say management in there, Article twenty-four, or was that?
Yeah, that's how I received it, so.
Stormwater management handbook, so it needs to just say stormwater handbook.
So the way that you can do so on that one, you can't say, if, if you want, if the planning board wants to change that language, the warrant has been posted and cannot be changed.
Okay.
What, what is handed out to the folks in, in the town meeting as what was posted in the warrant cannot be changed.
Sure.
And I think it applies to this one and one other. So on this one, the motion, if you want further language changes, instead of saying, I move to approve Article, what are we on, twenty-four, as printed in the warrant,
Yep.
I move to approve, and then you're gonna have to read the entire new, you're gonna have to file on a draft in advance, the motion as you want it, get that motion to me as soon as possible, so I can have, um, Town Council review it, so she can look at the legality of it, and you're basically replacing the language as was printed in the warrant with what you wanna do.
Which is just to delete the word management, is it not called management handbook?
It's not, it's.
So as printed, some, on this one, as printed in the warrant, by, by further deleting the word whatever, adding a comma between, you know, so, so it's, it's, it's more of a move as printed in the warrant.
So do I need an amendment form from Damian to do that?
It's not an amendment, you're moving, the planning board is moving the article, so you're the main motion.
You got that?
I'm, I'm the main motion, that's what I.
You are.
That is technically what is called the main motion, so it's just eight.
Move to.
So if, if everybody's kind of in agreement with those changes, then I can have Council draft it, if, if you all are in agreement that that's the changes you wanna see in the final.
Does that make sense?
That's fine, it's just, we just called it the wrong thing in here, it's just stormwater handbook.
Stormwater, I went and I looked online, it says stormwater handbook, volume one, two, and three.
Okay.
So it's not management in there, it used to be the stormwater management guidelines or guidance.
Gotcha, okay, alright, no problem. Okay, uh, Article twenty-five. Yes, Tave.
Have no opinion on this one, the bylaw committee.
Has no opinion on this one, okay.
We hope we stop.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna assume that they're a privacy thing, any specific cause for this?
Can, can, I, I know that you guys had the meeting on the twelfth of April, and unfortunately I was not here, but, and I, I do have a question, okay? I know what the bylaw says now, and I know what you're trying to change it to, okay? My question is, are there any exceptions to this rule, any at all? As far as having one habitable building per lot, is there any exceptions to the rule?
Intended exceptions or?
Any exceptions, in other words?
I don't think so, it says one habitable building per lot, so that's what we're trying, we're just trying to clarify.
That's what it says.
Right, but we've also got single-family zoning, we've also got multi-family zoning, like, in multi-family, is it different for habitable, habitable buildings versus?
No, it says clearly.
Cause this is, what it, what it currently says is simply, only one habitable building shall be placed on any one lot, period, that's it.
If you wanna have four units in there, you're allowed to have four units, and if you wanna have twelve units, you can have twelve units, but it has to be one building.
If you're allowed to.
You're allowed to.
I think it happens in developments, like, um, uh, after terrace, cause that's one place, but there's, you know, there's many units in a building, but then there's another building and there's another building, I mean, then, you know, that's when it happens.
Is that different, because it's a, it's a subdivision though, right?
Right, oh yeah, no, it's definitely subdivision, but that's the only place where there's one piece of property with two buildings that are habitable.
A lot of those laws go back to the days where they were trying to be extremely.
Restricted.
Restricted, right, right, right.
And they had other issues.
For race reasons, that's where a lot of those laws come from.
Oh, cool.
Well, actually, when, a lot of those laws come from because we used to have septic systems in town and you needed bigger area for that.
Part of it is that, part of it is also race.
So, there, so currently, only one habitable building shall be placed on any one lot, that is the rule, so we're not trying to change that rule.
Currently, but it's also not.
Um, excuse me?
What we're, what we're trying, what, yeah, we're, all we're doing is clarifying here, and so.
I understand that it's a clarification, but I understand where is that clarification, that, where is that clarification coming from?
Well, right, so we can't, we can't really talk about specifics, that doesn't really matter, um, but we can.
It does kinda actually matter, because there's, oh.
Ma'am, this is not a public hearing.
It's, right, this is, like, if you, if you wanna talk about it, we can talk about it in, on the meeting floor, but this, the public hearing happened last meeting, last month.
Six months before we've been talking about this.
And we have been, we've actually, it's been on the agenda four different times, so we've been working on this to get to the public hearing. Four, four, four times before the public hearing, then we had the public hearing. Um, so, I think the question is what we wanna maybe draw out to try to explain what we're talking about. Uh, I don't know, what I suggest would be a.
That's where the pictures would be better.
Picture, uh, an actual picture would be better, okay, so we can't, it's fine.
We can go to another town and take a picture.
Nope, I, go to another town and take a picture?
Well, take a picture of somebody else's property, but this is where it's two buildings on one lot.
You can't go to another town because the other town's allowed.
Right, well, we do, I think.
I wanna provide.
The other town's what?
Provide a photo.
There are other towns around this area that.
I, I think that we're hearing, we can't.
That's what I mean, so take a picture of it there and say this is what we're drawing.
Right, we could do a drawing.
No, we can, well, we can provide a, a photo and it, it would look the same as what reality is and we can explain that there's a, we can say that what we're saying here is that there was a foundation underground, or we could have another picture that has a trellis connecting the two, I can get that.
Okay.
So, we can do something.
I think, I think it would be good to, to also provide a picture of one, of, of, of a connection that does work, right? Because we're not saying no connections at all, like, where, you, right, right, that we talked about offset things or, um, if there's, you know, maybe it's connected storage units in between, right?
I, I don't think you can actually do that if you look at Article twenty-six.
So basically what you're saying is that keep this discussion, keep the discussion to the board.
Well, that's a different, yeah, so, um, so.
Twenty-five.
Yep, so I think, I think that would be helpful for people, right? Cause I mean, uh, we were, we're not trying to say.
The unfortunate one thing with this one, I think, is that we were trying to just clear up what we're saying, what we have,
Right, we have.
And bringing it to the floor and having people look at it, they might say, well, I don't care, you know?
Right.
But, but if they don't care and they vote down the bylaw, they're not saying that it's allowed now. They're saying the existing bylaw is still unclear, it still doesn't allow it.
Right, it should still, well, I, I mean, we thought, we, again.
Yes, I know.
To us, uh, we thought that that one line was actually clear.
No, no, I, I think it is clear, but when you showed the picture of two buildings right next to each other, they say, I don't care, and they might say, no.
Yeah, well, that's, which is also fine, every, I mean, that's what, that's, it's, it is the, it is what, uh, what we do, that's what, that's what voting is for.
And so we do. Right, and so the explanation is, is to provide clarification for the definition for ease of interpretation.
For ease of interpretation, yeah.
Ease of interpretation of one habitable building for.
What one habitable building is.
The statement in advance of it, I mean, it's a definition, so it's got one line and then there's a second line that adds to the other one.
Yeah.
But I, I think also, just because I'm worried about it now, look what you did. I mean, it's just that I'm worried about them saying, we're, we're trying to define one habitable building and then it's gonna come through and people are gonna look at the picture and say, I kinda don't care, they can have two habitable buildings, and now what do we do?
No.
Well, they can't, they, they, we just, the motion, the motion is going to be approve or not approve this change.
No, it's, it's not a vote.
And if it is not approved, then it goes back to what is there.
Right.
That's it.
But in any event, it's still one habitable building.
And, and look, no one else is going to come forward and bring anything else, because look how long it takes. So, let's move on, um. Alright, Article twenty-six, uh, about accessory use, uh, yes.
Bylaw committee voted not to approve this.
That is, alright, that is, that is totally up to the bylaw committee.
There was a lot of conversation at town meeting about.
Um.
No, um, I spoke with the Chair of the Bylaws Committee today and he had specific questions, not that they just voted it down.
Okay.
The specific things were, what about temporary containers for people, like, that are moving or something like that?
Right.
And I said, we discussed it.
Yep.
And we said something about, um, allowing them, or it was something, I think George said, you can allow it to be there for less than sixty days, a year or sixty days, and it doesn't require a use, um, determination, but it wasn't in the bylaw, so John said, if you can add something, then he would, or actually, he scheduled a bylaws committee meeting before the town meeting to review what we proposed after this meeting. And so what I did was I put together and sent it out for discussion on the website or on the email list to, um, actually, it was a replacement of a comma with a semicolon, so.
Oh, right, I saw that.
I didn't complain about that one. Um, and so the addition that I would propose that we add is notwithstanding the above, which is the statement that they're not allowed in residential districts and require a building permit in other districts, notwithstanding the above, the temporary use of such unit for less than sixty days in a three-year period is permissible under the bylaw in all dis- permissible under the bylaw in all districts.
No, that seems fair.
And so that kinda gets the issue that he said the bylaws committee had raised, the temporary.
What if the house burns, they need a, a trellis?
Storage. But, uh, this. That's a different story, no, a trellis, um, that's a different article, this is containers for, it's got a definition for container for storage of stuff.
Do we need to make an amendment at the floor?
That, I think would be an amendment, but it's up to you, Jen.
No, it wouldn't be an am- an amendment, it would be the same thing, that you would amend the article with the motion.
Just before you read it, you read the way you want.
You read, you read it with the way you want.
As printed and then you want to read the word.
No, you change the printed.
No, you say as printed, and then you add your additions with the following.
Okay.
With the following addition and then you read the whole thing out with.
You don't have to read the whole thing, as printed warrant with adding after the word six, the word seven, you know.
Yep.
So, the, the first part is okay, he didn't say anything?
It's just more about that temporary bit, right?
Yeah, it was just the temporary use for the container, but do you know of any other concerns that were raised, why their bylaws was, committee didn't like it?
It's too bland.
What does that mean?
Too bland.
Basically, it is double talk. I, I mean, I don't even, I don't even understand what you wrote. And, and I, this is not the time and place, I mean, the Chair made it clear that this is not the time and place that we already got the, the, uh, the public hearing. So this is something that we'll discuss at town meeting in the floor.
Yep, that's fine.
So let's see this and, you know, let's see how that goes with the town.
Doesn't go through, doesn't go through.
Yeah, it's, it's not a, yeah, it's not a big.
If not, that's fine.
Right.
You can always.
Okay, so these zoning bylaws, if the town votes not to approve as is, does that mean that the planning board will then go back and reinvestigate these bylaws?
Not necessarily.
No, not likely, it'll just stay the way it is.
Yeah.
Cause we put in, three years we've been trying to get updates to these bylaws to get feedback and input and we heard nothing until after we have the public hearing.
Right.
Okay, well, I can tell you right now off the top of my head, that the ZBA cannot get involved in this.
That's, fine.
Because we're a party to the board and we do make, we cannot make, help make policy, that's what I was told.
Which is fine.
That's fine.
So I'm just, I'm just saying, so I'm not here, I'm here as, as a president of the town that has read these bylaws.
I think that's fine, I mean, I think the bylaws committee certainly should and could have had, uh, comments ahead of time as opposed to waiting until after.
We just got it, we just talked.
No.
That can't be right though, because it sets up.
It was, it was put out for the public hearing, so the public hearing had the same things with a few differences in the wording that we adjusted at the public hearing.
Right.
We didn't change any intent or, uh, extent of the, of the wording, we tweaked the editing and that's about it.
And I know we requested some feedback from boards, Melanie sent that out, just like we get the requests for things that come before the ZBA to make comments.
Uh, the board could consider.
But, doesn't matter, a- actually, like, that, none of that stuff matters right now, where we're at is, this is what we have to put forward.
Can I just ask a quick question?
And, one question, yes.
Can you just, real quick, just, or maybe I have to talk to you after the meeting, can you explain to me what the difference is between the stormwater management that we have in the zoning bylaw and what MS four stormwater is? What's the difference?
Stormwater is stormwater, it's all the same stormwater, it's just a different law that initiated the, um, the need for the, the rule. The MS four is a EPA requirement for municipalities.
Okay, I'll start here after the meeting, cause I have a few more questions.
Okay. So let's talk about, uh, who's going to talk about.
Well, do we wanna?
We can, yeah, sure, we, let's do the vote post, and I'll take a motion regarding what we're doing here.
I moved to recommend approval of Articles.
Of Articles.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one.
Not eighteen, I think, we're, uh, we're, we're twenty-one through twenty-six.
Starting twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Twenty-one through twenty-six.
Twenty-one through twenty-six.
Two-sixteen.
Excellent.
Yeah, I don't know.
Can I, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, we recommend approval of those bylaw changes, um, so, let's talk about who's tonight presenting and ma- so we are making the motions also, or?
So, how is that, that's, I guess that's the first question, good, I don't. So, how is that, that's, I guess that's the first question, good, I don't think.
Yeah, cuz usually, how is that, who, cuz, I mean, typically when I've been in meeting, of the mo, all the motions are being made by, thanks George, by the Select Board, and.
Select Board does not want to make any motions on this zoning bylaw. So either Frank or Winnie can make, yeah, or you.
Select, they're not gonna make the motion.
Okay.
So.
Fine, um.
Either, either anyone can make a motion, Planning Board.
Whoever can do it?
I will do it.
Any of us can do it.
And then, uh, anyone can give a, from the Planning Board, anyone can give an explanation. The moderator will ask, you know, if we have an explanation, that time he can give an explanation, and also the public will ask, or you can explain the bylaw on the floor.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to make the motions.
Alright, Chair usually makes a motion.
Yeah.
And if, and the explanation, are you comfortable with the explanations, or do you, I mean, I was thinking you just do the explanation if it gets dicey.
Yeah.
And there are interesting questions, I can.
I was gonna say, I'd like to, I'd like to, I wanna call on you to, uh.
Well, Frank.
I always think the strategy should be, when you're up there, and you make the motion, and then when they ask for an explanation, and you give a brief little explanation, if there's no more interest, it's one person, it's simple, you just stay up there, and they, it calls to a vote, and you're done with it.
Yeah.
If it starts to get more questions, if people start coming to the microphone, and you say, well, this is the way it is, and you need backup, then other people start talking about it, you know, but.
I know, I could suggest to you one thing, you know, maybe you can make the motion, let Winnie explain it.
Why?
I think, I think you have to make it simple.
The explanation is gonna be written down.
Make it life easy, that's all.
So that's, so you, as long as you're comfortable with it.
I, I, I can do it as, I, I will not be able to answer maybe some of the detailed questions.
No, no, that's what I mean, you read the ex, the explanation that's there, which, I mean, you, that's easy, but when people come up with questions that you kinda maybe, they're, you don't even understand the question kinda, and
Yeah.
when you're in, in the spotlight in the first place, you're not really thinking about their question. It'd be nice if somebody else could come in, and you have a little time to think, they have time to think, and you have sort of a second to do it.
I, I will invite you up if I need to.
And I'll answer, and then you can correct my answer when you get back at the mic.
Yeah, 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 sounds good, sounds good. No, I, it's fine, I was planning on doing it, I figured I was doing it, so.
But the first three, I don't think is too heavy.
No, but many of them are not, it's, it'll, it'll be fine.
But I think the, the one person, just, this is a routine thing, here we go, that look.
Yeah.
The optics make it look passable.
I mean, it is.
When you start helping it go up to try to defend.
It's all, I think it's relatively common sense, I'm gonna need some po, potential assistance on adding in whatever language I'm supposed to say.
Well, I'm gonna draft them.
If, if I could, just, just a suggestion, I think that the discussion that was had when these were presented to the Select Board as well as tonight indicates that there is going to be significant, um, conversation on these articles. Um, I, I would say, you know, the Planning Board could consider, if you see the art, rather than, rather than bring the article forward in the rooms, you can feel the temperature of the room is, is not with, with the article as it is, rather than bring that forward to a vote, which would kill the article, amend to pass over so that it doesn't fail at town meeting, and bring it up again after additional work over the summer months. That's just a personal suggestion.
That's always an option, that's, yeah, we could do that, um.
Is there a limitation if it fails? Like, do we not?
Right, yeah, when it's a Planning Board-initiated warrant article, if it gets failed, we just do it again.
It's more of a public perception, right, like, that you brought this up, it failed, why are you bringing this up again, we've already told you how we feel about it. So it's a public perception rather than the future, so that it has a better chance of success.
Yeah, and we're a two-thirds majority vote, so you can kinda usually tell, there's always a loud contingent, but that doesn't mean that's a third of the voting board block.
Can I, can I say something?
Jay?
So the only two articles, if we could explain it in a nice way, we could sell it to the town meeting. So the one article is enough, one habitable buildings in one lot. So that's one of the arti, one of the, uh, article. That needs good explanation. If we have the good explanation, people will understand. Some, they said, you know, oh, why not we have a two habitable building in the lot? That's not the bylaw, our current bylaw. Our current bylaw says only one habitable building, the interpretation is the one, we are having a problem now. The interpretation, what we have, based on the, some of the building inspectors and the o, other things, if two building is connected with an, uh, uh, buried foundation.
I can say that, gen, I can say that general without pointing out.
With, with the, with the, with the buried foundation is considered as a one lot, which is not, which really is not.
Where two, 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 for all intents and purposes, looks like two buildings.
Yeah.
On the lot.
So that's what we are trying to eliminate in this bylaw by writing this. Go ahead.
If that's the case, then we have to develop the, um, take a step back and say, we're trying to make this bylaw fair for everybody in town because there are people in town that have gone the extra effort and have conformed to the bylaw, and put their single habitable building and whatever they had to do, they were clever about the way they presented it, they did this and everything, and we're just trying to make it clear so that o, other people building on their lots have the same and, or, or clearer instructions for what they're supposed to do.
That comes with the explanation, if we could explain it.
That's fine, I can.
But you have to tune it towards, this is better for the town, you know what, we're trying to clamp you down even harder because you're ants, and we're trying to squash you.
Man, you guys, you guys are gonna, yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, I will read it, I just, I'm already up there.
Uh, that's alright, I, I, you know, you're gonna catch me after a very long week, so I'm gonna be tired, but.
And also, the second one is in a better explanation for the accessory apartment.
And it's Monday at nine.
I know, it's gonna be Monday at nine, and I am, I, I will do my best, um.
That's all we can ask.
Bring the coffee candy.
Yeah. Uh, so.
I think I'll check.
You got that, you're.
Yeah, I think we're fine. Edit. And that's fair, we can always, I mean, I think some of these are more contentious than the other, there's one that, I, I particularly care about the split lot one, that's the one I wanna see go, so, um.
That's another one about fair to the town.
See if Jen has any needs or questions.
Okay. Yes. Jen, is there anything else you need from us?
So, um, you voted on the endorsement, somebody's gonna move the articles at town meeting.
I'm gonna move the articles and do the explanations.
Somebody's gonna provide me explanations for, for tomorrow.
No, Winnie's gonna do, you're gonna give her the explanations and the, and the drawings or whatever, or pictures, whatever you're gonna do.
Explanations.
I have the drawings tomorrow. Winnie's.
It's gotta happen, I, I cannot, I absolutely cannot do it tomorrow.
Um, and then, just where there, I guess, I guess the only question is, so for the, the red line handout, um, where there's those two articles that are gonna be amended within the motion, I think I'll, you know, listen to what you say, but I think what I'll do is I'll write it as I know the motion is going to change it.
Ultimately, yeah.
And kinda put an asterisk to say, will be amended in the motion, just so that people know
What's gonna happen.
what's actually being voted, as opposed to getting confused by it not, extra words.
That's very good, yeah, keeping it clear is helpful, yes.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Would be, yes, it will be easier for me to read it then, I hope, um, yes, Mark.
Should we, should we actually have the red lines, or should we have?
So unfortunately, that was a soft word, um, when you do a strike through, you can't make the strike through black unless you change the text.
Oh, it wasn't so much the color, as should we not have it there at all? Should we just have what we want it to look like?
Well, that's what's in the warrant.
That's what she's doing in the warrant.
But would, would the example be?
That's an addition, this is an additional document.
No, I got it.
So we allow the warrant.
And what do we want the additional document to look like? Do, like, we could have a focus group and ask her if that's useful to see the line out, or to see just the or, original, or not even, you know.
It is, people are searching for the word.
Yeah, cuz you wanna know, I, I can tell you right now, I wanna see exactly what is being changed, I can't, I can't.
So that would be nice to have that with the lines out and the, the news.
Yes, it's why, it's why I asked for it to come to us in this format, so we could actually talk about what we were doing instead of.
I didn't know if that was just for us to talk about.
No, that is, that, eh, every faculty motion that I see on the floor at WPI also looks like this, um, so, great, can we move on from this item? I think we're down to, we've already done minutes, and here's these. Yeah, we did the minutes, and we've got, got these wonderful invoices to sign, which I am going to sign right now, we've got some Nuhah Circle. And.
What?
Some Westland Circle, no, 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 just invoices.
And we got money in all the accounts for these?
And Shrine. And Century Drive. And Twenty Hold Street.
We still down to one signature on these, or we more than?
I think we only need one, and more Twenty Hold Street.
And we'll begin for this year?
No, just one.
We did that this year?
Yep.
Oh, that's, cuz the year comes up next, meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did, I just actually recently looked at that, looks, hang on, let me not, yeah.
So.
That is my last signature. And here's this one, too. Alright, folks.
You gonna come to the alumni groups?
Okay.
The alumni.
Alumni events?
Are, are you gonna start asking me for money, or what?
Exactly.
We want a dollar back.
No projects.
Give me that dollar, um, alright, excellent.
Most untied, Jen?
I have an, I have an item I'd like to put on a future agenda first, who will, uh.
A future agenda?
Yeah, cuz I don't, you wanna do it tonight?
No.
Okay.
So then, don't talk about it right now.
But it's got on the agenda.
You send them.
You send it to.
Send it on.
Yeah.
I'm gonna forget.
There's, we have, we have a form online, it's a thing that we tell everybody. Okay, listen, alright, I got a motion to adjourn, we'll have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright.